Hmm? I know.
For our next agenda, um, so you want to ask?
Two of them.
Yeah, um, true.
Someone drew on my signage. Huh? Oh, to make sure the pen worked.
Okay, I call to order the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 27th, 2019. The first order of business is to continue discussion, having a public hearing on short-term rentals. So if Mr. Martin would please proceed.
Members of Planning Commission, just a little bit of background of how we've gotten here. The zoning ordinance currently does not define short-term rentals. We are working under the current zoning administrator's interpretation that short-term rentals are permitted by right in business districts and in owner-occupied residential district properties, subject to the normal occupancy standards, which is no more than three unrelated individuals. Currently, at last count, there were 365 short-term rental listings identified within the city. And as we know, that these listings have increased over time, anywhere upwards of 37 percent. While we're here, it was back in October of last year, council directed staff to prepare amendments that would allow short-term rental units in the city. This is actually the fourth time, that I believe this has been before the commission, January 23rd, February 13th, February 27th, and today. Now, this will be the second public hearing at the last meeting, Planning Commission directed staff to re-advertise this to receive more citizen input. So, the ordinance would define a short-term rental as accessory or secondary use of a residential dwelling unit, or portion thereof by host to provide room or space that is intended to be occupied for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days. So, anything beyond 30 days would be considered just a normal rental of property. Short-term rental uses would be permitted by right, subject to certain development standards, in all of the city zoning districts except the industrial district, industrial districts, and the institutional one district. Owner occupancy as drafted would be required in the RC Conservation District and the R1 and R2, which is the city's low-density residential districts. The owner would not have to be present while the property was in use as a short-term rental. However, in these districts, owner occupancy is required, which means it would have to be the owner's primary residence. Structures offered for short-term rental in the RC, R1, and R2 districts would be required to retain the appearance of a single household dwelling. Just for information purposes, the zoning ordinance defines a related people as related individuals. These include people who are related by blood, are married to each other, or in substantially similar relationship, and children under their care. In typically the way the ordinance is now, no more than three unrelated individuals may occupy a dwelling unit. In terms of short-term rentals, the Planning Commission directed staff to change the ordinance where it would be limited to no more than four individuals. The concern was that if two married couples wanted to stay at a short-term rental, they would not have been able to do so under the normal occupancy standard. Also, the number of dwelling units shall not exceed that of the underlying zoning district. So, if say owner-occupied home in an R1 district, the owner of that property is entitled to have an accessory dwelling unit. This is intended so that they could not have the accessory dwelling unit and a short-term rental unit. There would only be the normal number of dwellings in that district. One additional parking space would be required, in addition to what's normally required, which is one per unit. The Planning Commission decided to exempt the B4 Urban Commercial District from this requirement, as this district, which is essentially the downtown, is exempt from parking requirements currently. A hundred and fifty dollar registration fee would be required for all units used as a short-term rental. And failure to register the property as a short-term rental would result in a penalty of $500. All buildings offered for short-term rental would be required to meet the requirements of the Uniform Statewide Building Code, which we've looked at this over the past few weeks, and that means that they would have to meet the requirements for a single household dwelling. There's nothing other than that. Three violations of state or local laws or ordinances, regulations related to the short-term rental, would result in revocation of approval for the short-term rental. So, just to remind the commission, there's been several iterations of this draft ordinance. This is what I've just described, is where the Planning Commission last discussed in the directions that were made to staff to change it.
Thank you. So, we have a lot of information, we've heard from a lot of people, so we do want people to come speak. So, when you do come speak, I'd like you to please sign your name and state your name. And I think it would be all right to ask if, first of all, is there anybody who wants to speak in favor of what we have down here right now as it stands? Okay, so, everybody, I'm sure there is differing opinions on opposition, but I'd like to hear everybody. If you do represent a group of people, you know, maybe three or four people have gotten together and have the same thing. It'd be nice if you could have one person who could represent that group, so we don't hear the same, you know, the same argument. And if we do represent people, we might ask for a show of hands of who you represent, so that we can really tally up, you know, what the comments are. So, we'll go ahead and get started. The, there is a lighting system, Mr. Martin, would you explain that for them quickly?
Yes, so, if it's an individual speaking, they're allowed three minutes. If it's a person representing a group, 10 minutes is allowed. On typically three minutes, you'll see the lights, it'll be green. At one minute, it'll change to yellow, and then after three minutes is expired, it'll start blinking red.
Then you'll know it's time to sit down. So, whoever wants to come up first, we'll get started.
And if they could sign.
Sign their name and state their name, yeah.
My name is Chris Feraldi, I'm representing the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance. I have a copy of my, my comments today, if you would like to read it, I can bring it up afterwards. If not, I'll just get started. As the Chairman Rogers, members of the Lynchburg Planning Commission, as the Regional Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Organization for the Lynchburg region, which includes the counties of Amherst, Campbell, Appomattox, and Bedford, and along with the city, the Lynchburg Regional Business Alliance and its membership would like to weigh in on the short-term rental discussion before you today. The alliance is dedicated to advocating for pro-business and economic development, economic development-friendly policies that would better our community. With this notion in mind, we would like to commend you for taking on this issue, and especially for opening up this discussion back up to the community. Based on the analysis of the alliance's Government Relations Committee, it seems as though the policies being discussed would hinder the use of short-term rentals, almost to the point of making the city a no-go zone for entrepreneurs. While removing the 120-day operational limit is recommended and applauded, and we do thank you for that, there are still some policies the alliance would suggest some amendments or revisions to. The committee raised concern over the congruence of mandating the owner be present in some zoning districts and not others. Additionally, this particular policy was not supported at all, and the committee opposes it entirely. The policy, owner occupancy, would also stamp out any possibility of an entrepreneur to purchase, develop, maintain, and maintain multiple properties within the city, and as such, would be the antithesis of the kind of policies the alliance advocates for, championing free enterprise, entrepreneurship, and business, pro-business. There was also, in general, a desire to keep the policies as consistent as possible across the city, as this would alleviate any confusion and would assist the city in potential policing of these properties. Members of the committee also expressed their desire to strike the current proposal of no more than four unrelated individuals that may stay in the unit. This does not take into consideration the size or house of the apartment, meaning the current stipulation would not allow a three-bedroom home to accommodate three couples. The alliance would recommend short-term rentals considered something along the lines of a commonly-accepted fair housing law, whereby it permits two persons per bedroom. This compromise would, or something similar to it, whether that be two, three, or however you would deem proper, would allow apartments or houses to have, to accommodate the amount of individuals the house is designed to house for the short-term rental. The committee also concluded that the business platform, example Airbnb, is very apt to self-regulate. Due to strict policies, these platforms mandate their users adhere to, and a very public rating system, both for the host and the guest, the overwhelming majority of these short-term rental properties would be under intense governance by their own platform of choice. The point is evident based off of only 17 complaints out of 365 short-term rental listings in the city from the past two years. So, we would agree with the current three violations rule. If the language violations of state, local, or state or local laws, ordinance, or regulation stays, we would also request that these violations be collected and imposed on an annual basis, not just three in total. There are many current policies in place that are perfectly equipped to combat any potential issues these properties may cause. It is important to the alliance that these complaints be founded and only acted upon if current laws or regulations are being violated. Finally, if more restrictive policies are needed in the future, the alliance stands ready to offer positive rules and guidelines that foster the entrepreneurial spirit while attempting to diminish those identified issues. The alliance recommends the Planning Commission adopt policies like these, or some variation of them, that do not over-regulate a relatively small problem. All of these policies are based on the city council's directive to allow short-term rentals within city limits. Accordingly, each policy the commission considers should be looked at through this lens. Proposed regulations should not prohibit or short-term rental from operating effectively. Those are my comments before you today, I'd be happy to answer any questions or provide context to you from the Government Relations Committee meeting, and I do have a copy of my comments for you today, if you'd like to review them, so, thank you.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, Mr. Feraldi, could you just explain to us how your committee worked, you know, the composition of it, and how it came to come up with the, with the statements that you've read? Just a little bit of background about the committee, I think it would be helpful for us to understand how that came about.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman and those present. For those who do not know, the Government Relations Committee is the legislative arm of the Chamber of Commerce and Economic Development Office, which we call the alliance. It is comprised of approximately 10 to 12 business people with various backgrounds, ranging from banking, education, healthcare, it's the full gambit. This committee meets on a monthly basis and discusses legislative issues, ranging from local, like this before you today, to state, to federal, although we usually stick within the bounds of local and state. This discussion was brought about because we deemed it as an issue that the chamber should at least have a discussion on in this committee. The committee reviewed all the documents we were able to find to date, and that was actually in early March, so some of the documents we did review at that time are slightly out of date compared to what we are talking about today, like the 120-day, 120-day limit. So, that's why we had to make that stipulation in the letter. So, we did review all the documents we could find on this topic. We talked extensively for about an hour and a half, reviewing what we could find, and then talking about what positive solutions we might be able to offer. Because we did not want to come before you today and say just what we oppose, we wanted to try to be a part of the conversation, offer what could we provide that might be helpful. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, please come up, sign your name and state your name.
I'm going to get mine out of the way because I'm nervous. Hi, my name's Amy Corbett, and I'm an Airbnb host. I love Lynchburg, and I want us to work together because we are all better together. Thank you for having this public hearing, thank you for listening. The decisions you make on this issue will affect our city's tourism and economic growth, as well as my own family's livelihood. It surprised me when I began my first Airbnb to see who was coming to our city. It wasn't just Liberty Graduation. Just this month, I hosted a woman for two weeks in my Airbnb from Williamsburg. By the end of her time with me downtown, she fell in love with Lynchburg, and now she's filled out an application at the Flower Mills Loft and plans to relocate here. Another local family had their basement flood last week and booked my client's Airbnb for a few days until it was fixed. I've hosted Christian weekend retreats in my five-bedroom Airbnb. One of my favorite gatherings was the group of eight women who have an annual knitting retreat, and chose my home in Lynchburg as their meeting-up spot. Under your current proposals, you would be deeming this knitting retreat as illegal, because it is not owner-occupied, and there were more than four unrelated people in a five-bedroom home. So, I would respectfully ask you to let the ladies knit. Seventeen complaints in two years. My historic home on Norwood Street, before we purchased it, had way more than 17 complaints. On one house, exterior issues, weeds, violations, and more. It had been abandoned for 40 years and was the eyesore of the neighborhood. Talk about a real problem. Our house is now currently assessed at 10 times the value. We fixed it up, we host hundreds of people from all over the world. We're booked almost every night of the month, my property stays impeccably maintained. I'm worried about wrinkles in the bed sheets and dust on the furniture, or else I'll get a bad review, and it would hurt my success on Airbnb. Guests review everything about their stay, including parking, and hosts review the guests, so they come vetted, or they won't be able to stay in another Airbnb. So, it's in everyone's best interest to put their best foot forward. So, this process doesn't need strict regulation, it is self-regulating. I'd love to ask if you'd remember that your decisions here do not only impact a few neighborhoods, but they stretch far and wide across the entire city. So, the question is, could neighbors who are worried about protecting their neighborhood form HOAs without legislating an entire city? Because I believe we're better together, I would be willing to serve on a subcommittee or task force to continue this collaboration on short-term rentals in our city. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon, my name is Jason Phelps. I'm an Airbnb host that loves Lynchburg, and I also want us to work together because I believe we are better together. So, thank you for the opportunity for the public hearing today. I do have multiple concerns with the proposal before you today, but my primary concern is the idea of equal treatment. At the previous commission meeting on the 27th of February, there was discussion about equal treatment and how zoning ordinances should be defined in order to promote that equal treatment. As a short-term rental host, I believe that all, I agree, that all short-term rentals should be treated equally. And that means that there should not be a restriction of owner occupancy only in certain districts throughout the city, but rather equal freedom across all districts. In addition to the discussion during commission meetings, there's also been discussion in the public arena about how short-term rentals should be regulated or treated equally with other lodging options, like hotels or long-term rentals. This brings up a few interesting points. The first is that the number of complaints against long-term rentals far exceed those against short-term rentals. One specific area is trash. It's been discussed even recently in this very council chamber, that over the past couple of weeks, how many complaints due to trash is blocking the right-of-way when a tenant from a long-term rental has been evicted or vacated. That blocks right-of-way for days or weeks at a time while the city comes to clean it up. And that has resulted in increased city complaints and costs. It should be noted that the complaints for short-term rentals are not only far fewer in number, but they also have less impact on other city residents and staff. Yet, today, we find ourselves here discussing seven new regulations specifically and exclusively for short-term rentals, and it seems unnecessary when only, when less than 1 percent of short-term rental transactions have generated a complaint in the past two years. Secondly, to my knowledge, no short-term rental owner has approached the city of Lynchburg to ask for millions of dollars in startup capital, loans, loan payments, or tax incentives that some hotels across our city have enjoyed at taxpayer expense. While I'm happy that we have great hotels in our city, and I use them, if we as short-term rental hosts are to be treated and regulated equally with hotels, we should also have the same access to money. The problem with treating short-term rentals like hotels, or like a long-term rental, is that they're just not the same. The current proposal places short-term rentals in the same box with long-term rentals or hotels, and it just doesn't fit. Perhaps a better solution would be to follow the example of some other localities across our state and our nation that have recognized short-term rentals don't fit in that traditional lodging box, and they've defined a new category that aligns with what we're actually doing, which is home sharing. So, instead of trying to put a square peg in a round hole, or instead of viewing and referring to short-term hosts as operators to be located, perhaps Planning Commission and city staff could see us as partners with the city. I would welcome the opportunity, as Amy mentioned, to work with others on a community task force, to fully develop a proposal that solves actual problems, and that, and those are valid concerns that do exist. That will allow our city to shine as an example of how private people and city government can come together and continue to make Lynchburg a great place to live, work, and play. I appreciate your time today, and thank you very much.
My name is Adrena Garby. My husband Keith and I are Airbnb hosts, and we have lived in Lynchburg all of our life. We have worked here, raised and educated our children, and are now retired. Over the years, we have been able to acquire some rental real estate that we plan to use to supplement our social security income. This extra income will enable us to maintain our home and meet our additional expenses during retirement years. Short-term rentals are working better for us than long-term leases have in the past. Short-term rentals allow us to offer our guests something elected officials cannot, personal connection to our community. We have guests coming to Lynchburg from all over the country, and for many different reasons. Most of our guests are affiliated with Liberty University. In some, in some way, they come to visit their children here, they are here for intensive study, or they come to enjoy the many special events hosted by the university. However, we also have guests who are in town for weddings, birth of grandchildren, and just to enjoy the many historical places in and around the city. When our guests arrive, they are greeted with a pleasant, friendly atmosphere. Our rentals are fully equipped, kitchen is tastefully decorated and comfortably furnished. The outside area is well-maintained and landscaped, and include a driveway that will take care of off-street parking. We have overall five-star rating for our cleanliness, and the reviews received from our guests are outstanding. And thanks to, thanks for providing that extra neighborly touch. They always are very appreciative when you are there and relate with them. The short-term rental business is self-regulating due to the reviews that I mentioned earlier. This is evident in the law, large, low number of complaints that have been filed. Someone looking for a place to stay in Lynchburg, whether it is a hotel or short-term rental, will use reviews from past guests when making their decisions. Our rental is located two miles from the LU campus, which makes it a very popular place to stay. We entered the short-term rental market in mid-2016 and worked diligently to achieve the excellent rating. Our goal of using our rental real estate for supplemental income has been achieved. We are asking the Planning Commission to recommend to city council that we and the others that are represented here be allowed to continue to use our property as an income stream with additional restrictions. We all pay real estate tax on the properties and incur other expenses related to amenities and upkeep. We also pay taxes on the incoming, income generated from the rent. Additional restrictions and fees put an unnecessary burden on the owner and denies visitors to our beautiful city the opportunity of making a personal connection with the people that live here. Thank you.
Next person, please come up.
Hello? My name is John Meddell, I live in Amherst. One year ago, almost exactly, my wife and I came out here from the west coast. Our son and daughter live in the Amherst area, and we stayed in a B&B. A beautiful, restored, probably an old, I'm assuming, apartment building right here on Church Street. Little, beautiful, clean kitchen, single bedroom, great little living room overlooking the city, overlooking the river. the city, overlooking the river. And we began to fall in love with Lynchburg. We fell in love with the area around here. I think we were here for a week at the Airbnb. We ended up finding a house. We put our offering on it, it was accepted. We moved here, we now live here. Our opinion on Airbnb is that they're clean. The people that run them are professional, highly attentive to anything that the Airbnb client wants. We enjoyed our stay here. It couldn't have been more positive in terms of exposing people to what Lynchburg is like. Downtown was wonderful. Fifth Street is great. I can't say enough for Airbnbs. So, I hope you all, as the council here, take a second look at being positive towards Airbnbs. It's been a great experience for us, and we're here now, and we love it. Thank you.
My name is Hannah Richardson. I am an Airbnb hostess. I love Lynchburg, and I want us to work together because we are better together. I have a very important question for you all. Would you like to stay in a treehouse at the summit of a volcano? Well, maybe not, but a lot of people have. And Airbnb allows you to stay there. But maybe you prefer a luxurious home with a pool and all the amenities. Airbnb has that as well. Or maybe, like me, you want to stay in a house made entirely of bamboo in Bali, Indonesia. Airbnb has that as well. If you explore the world through Airbnb, you're going to see amazing pictures, you're going to see amazing experiences and opportunities. You'll discover two things. One, Airbnb cares about quality of homes. And two, you really want a vacation, all the time. So, what is Airbnb? It is a community of people all over the world who are dedicated to making life better for hosts and guests alike. Airbnb offers a platform so that anyone can offer hospitality to travelers. Airbnb gives an opportunity for hosts to make money so they can pay bills, make home improvements, or save for their children's future, like me. To me, Airbnb is a way so that I can work, even as a busy stay-at-home mom. Airbnb has over 2 million listings in 190 countries. They have yurts, cabins, apartments, boats, beach homes, tiny houses. You can travel with your family on a budget or splurge for a weekend. Now that I've talked about Airbnb for the offerings of all around the world, let's get local. The reason Airbnb is so popular is because it benefits endless communities. The two most important benefits for our community are quality and community. Airbnb encourages high quality. I, along with many other hosts, have made improvements to my home to attract more guests. Everything from simply decorating to painting to multi-thousand-dollar renovations. I personally use a local contractor, plumber, and painter to get my basement ready. Airbnb is making Lynchburg better. Airbnb also cares about community. On top of using local resources to improve properties, we recommend local businesses and restaurants for our guests, and they boost our economy. Best of all, when travelers come to Lynchburg, they get personal hospitality experiences from a host that wants to serve them. I can't think of a better way to welcome people into this city. So, in conclusion, if you allow Airbnb to continue and grow, you provide Lynchburg with higher quality of life and excellent hospitality. Let's work together because we're better together. Thank you.
My name is Clifton Eaton, and I'm joined here by my wife over here. We host an Airbnb in our home. We have a single bedroom with a bathroom that's in our basement, and we host guests. We're booked probably about 90% of the year. I have—I'm in total agreement with everything that everyone has said to this point. We find that there is tremendous benefit to both our family and to our community and to the guests who come into our homes. Two and a half years ago, my wife and I moved here from Baltimore, Maryland, and we moved here because we loved Lynchburg. We loved that—that the Parks Department was so busy. We loved the family-friendly atmosphere around here. We loved the walkable downtown. All those things really appealed to us, including the fact that I haven't heard a traffic report in, like, two years. You know, Airbnb has been one of the—one of the key things that has enabled us—to be able to do that. We have other investment properties that are long-term rentals, but we find that Airbnb is our most dependable source of income and the least hassle, and it's the one that we have the most attention on because we live there. Our home is 12 minutes from Liberty University. It's 14 minutes from hospitals and medical facilities, and it's central to the greater Lynchburg reason—region. We pride ourselves on providing a friendly, comfortable experience. We have a 4.9-star rating on Airbnb, and you'll probably hear things like that a lot from the hosts because we really care about that rating. If I get a 4.8-star, I—that has ruined my day. We host doctors, nurses, and other professionals that travel for work. We provide temporary housing for people who are moving into the region, or when Lynchburg had that big flooding episode. Our basement flooded as well. Thankfully, it didn't get to the Airbnb, but we hosted another family who needed—who needed a place to stay that night. We've—we host frequently families coming in for weddings. We host families visiting their college kids for sport games, events, or even—in some cases—we had one lady who came because her kid was struggling in school, and she had to make an emergency trip down here to—to check on things and see how things were going. We have hosted families visiting their extended family, and also intensives at the University of Lynchburg and Liberty University. We really enjoy being hospitable and helpful when guests are looking for restaurants and activity recommendations. It's so satisfying when someone takes one of our recommendations, then reports back on how well their experience went. Our move and our lifestyle change was made possible by Airbnb. As I said, Airbnb—the Airbnb income has been one of our best, most dependable streams of income in the last two years. Travelers want Airbnb. Just like services like Uber, it's become just a commonplace thing. People check it. We do it all the time. Whenever we're going to a new location, we're checking, "What's the Airbnb situation look like?" And we want Lynchburg to be a friendly place for Airbnb as well. I—I'd like to applaud the committee on—on their efforts to make this short-term rental a allowable thing under zoning. When we got here, of course, we were looking into it, and we found that—we found that our house did fit under the owner-occupied dwelling, so we were very thankful for that. At the end of the day, we do believe also that we are better together. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last year, when hurricanes went through—
Excuse me. Your name?
Sorry. My name is Lori Ruff. Last year, when the hurricanes went through North Carolina, I hosted Airbnb guests at no fee. I'm one of the Airbnb disaster relief hosts. I'm also a super host. The next guest that I'm hosting is staying with me because she's a super host who not only wants to bring her daughter down for Liberty for a weekend, she wants to see the community that her daughter's going to be living in should she choose to go to college here, which is pretty cool because that's what I do for my daughter. I wanted to see where she was going to be living. I lost my husband last year, and the first guest that I hosted was a father who was visiting his daughter for Liberty. And it was really cool to see that because that's something my husband would have done. And it's also kind of cool having this conversation now because right after the last gentleman that spoke, August 2nd last year, Gail Doyle Nichols and her husband lost their home in the floods on August 2nd. He was in the hospital at the time, and when she left the hospital the next day, she went to shelters, and then when they released him from the hospital, they went to extended stay instead of home. They lost 90% of everything they owned. And they planned to go to Florida for the winter, and so they decided to do that, and they were going to go to Coral Gables. And they got as far as Jacksonville before he went back to the emergency room and was released to hospice. And Gail continued to Coral Gables alone. And she spent Christmas alone in Coral Gables, thinking about Lynchburg and how—for the last 13 years, this was the only home she knew, taking care of her husband who had had Parkinson's disease. And she wanted to come home. And she has two cats. And I have a—a cat who's pretty friendly, and I accept people who have cats under certain restrictions, and she reached out to me, and we talked, and I accepted her. And she stayed with me until her husband's pension came through. It came in yesterday, and this morning, she moved back to extended stay. And Gail is now, again, part of the Lynchburg community. I drove her across the street on Timberlake Road to U-Haul, and she got a cargo van, and she gathered her belongings from my home and from the U-Haul short-term rental, and she went to extended stay to reestablish her home and to look for a place to live in the Lynchburg community. And I know that there's a lot of conversation around Airbnb, and there's a lot of conversation around the regulations, and I know that that's important, and I applaud you for looking at it. And I thank you for having a second opportunity for citizens to come and have a chance to hear about—the chance to talk to you, because life is not like it was in the days when we all got newspapers. But this is an important service, and it does need to have regulations around it, but it does also need to be recognized that there are people's lives in so many different ways of variations, and every choice that you make is going to have a ripple effect and unintended consequence. But don't let the widows and the orphans fall between the cracks, because those are the people that always do.
Thanks very much. And before we go any further, I—I do want to clarify our discussion—you know, at—at the risk of—of everybody coming up and—and just, you know, sharing the Airbnb story, I think it's a—it's a great business model, and—and there's a lot of great things about it, and there's a lot of opportunity provided. We're—we're really looking at these RC, R1, and R2 areas, and they're—you know, they're very different from, for example, the B4. And—and I want to make sure that our discussion focuses on those differences, you know, that—you know, understanding the R3 and the R2, the difference between them, and—and that discussion's really important. So, I really appreciate the—and I'm—and I know we all appreciate the—the value—you know, we have people on the—on the commission who stay in Airbnbs. But if we can really focus on that, so we can kind of use the time to our very best, that would be really great. So, next person, please come speak—sign your name.
I'm glad you said that, because I did mark neutral, because I know you're—
Yeah.
—being considered in the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Phil Alvin. I'm here with my wife, Hallie, and we are both 24 years old. As far as rentals go, long-term or short-term, that is pretty young to be getting into this. And I'm telling you, this was the reason that we were able to buy our house, was knowing that we were able to make income through Airbnb. And so, I wanted to touch on that, as we were talking about, you know, zoning, whether it's in sections or whether it's as a whole. I really do think it should be across the board, because I've been talking to a lot of people roughly my own age who are considering buying houses, considering entering into, you know, mortgages and home loans, and when someone does that, they are looking to stay long-term in Lynchburg, in this area. So, it is definitely a very valuable thing, and there—there is, in my opinion, you do run into some gray areas as far as, you know, some places needing to be owner-occupied and some not. If you only have one house, then that's great to be owner-occupied, but I do feel that it would really cut down on a lot of the benefits of new couples, younger couples, entering into the housing market, staying here in Lynchburg long-term. If they are not sure if they can, also put an Airbnb into their property and help them with their mortgage payments in order to keep them as a homeowner and not a long-term home renter. So, I just—would just encourage you guys to look into that as far as making it easier across the board with younger people who are entering into a market that we may not understand as much as some other people who have been here and done this a whole lot longer. I would just focus on making it easier for—for younger people entering into the next phase of home renting and—and home loaning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Demetrius Alexander. I live in Lynchburg, Virginia, off of Rivermont. Happy to be here today. Thank you, guys, for hosting this, so I can come and share. As a whole, I would say, what does Airbnb provide to the community—the community of Lynchburg, and I'll touch on the R2 and R3 as well. It provides—it provides not just what you hear with the business and—and income for people and supplemental income, but it also provides a large forthcoming of prices, property values going up, of landscaping being done, of renovations being done, and ultimately adding to the community. I know personally from my house that I've Airbnb'd. I've put about $15,000 in renovations solely for the fact of adding revenue for potential Airbnb, for even being able to host more people, finish a floor that wasn't finished, and it added property value to my neighborhood, and one of my neighbors was able to list their house for more because of the assessed value. So, as a whole, I—I believe there's a lot of positive things that come out of short-term rental and Airbnb. For myself, I spent 10 years in the military. I was in Army Special Operations while I was deployed. My father, who—who is here today, I had Airbnb. He managed that for me. I was able to supplement a lot of income as a single father as well, while I was gone and—while I was deployed, and it was just a really—it was a big blessing for me. And I—and it was just really was a blessing for me. And I look at—what I look at is the number of complaints, too, for the—for the different, either the zoning districts, either R2 or R3, or I look at the complaints as a whole, based off the factor of how many Airbnbs and how many stays there have been. So, the 365 listings in a year, if those people only have 100 listings—if they have 100 people stay with them, and there's 365, it's 36,500 stays per year. In just one year, and the total number of complaints, I just don't think that it justifies what I personally have seen proposed here today. I would say also that just from a—from a—from a founding constitutional standpoint of the economic standards that the—that the founding fathers had—I've written some stuff, and I'd like to share that. The economic concept of private property refers to the rights owners have to the exclusive use and disposal of physical object. Property is not a table, a chair, an acre of land. It's a bundle of rights which the owner is entitled to employ those objects. The alternative view is that private property consists merely of a legal deed to an object with the use of disposal, and that object in the whims and the mercies of the state. Under the latter view, the state retains ownership and may at any time regulate or even repossess property temporarily—temporary seeds and impose regulations to individuals that own that property. However, the founding fathers upheld the economic view of property. They believed that private property ownership, as defined under common law, pre-existed government. The state and federal government were mere contractual agents of the people, not sovereign lords or dictators over them for certain regulations to be imposed. All rights not specifically delegated to the government remain with the people, including the common law provisions of private property. Consequently, the constitutional rights regarding free speech, freedom of religion, the right of assembly, and private property rights, and they're all claims individuals, may hold and exercise against the government itself, and I appreciate being here today to be able to—to—to speak on that. In brief, private property— In brief, private property refers to the right of ownership and their possessions. So we can speak a person owning a land and using it, but what the owner in fact possesses is the right to perform certain actions of what he owns. These rights to perform physical actions called private property constitute the real factors of production and the real articles of trade.
Mr. Alexander, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Did it run over pretty extensively? So...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
That's fine.
Yeah, I'm actually representing a couple of people that are also sitting, sitting here as well. Michelle, who's over there, my father's over there as well. But that's okay. What's the time limit?
Well, it's three minutes.
Three minutes? Okay.
Yeah, so a large group, I think it's 10 minutes.
Okay, sure.
But we appreciate your comments.
Okay, sure. So do I have a minute and a half left or no?
You're over.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm over a minute. I apologize. I apologize. All right, thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Derek Hart. My wife and I are Airbnb hosts. We manage a couple of Airbnbs also for clients. We own a company called Lynchburg Organic Cleaning. We are a residential cleaning service here in Lynchburg. We serve Forest, Lynchburg, Bedford areas. And a good portion of our revenue comes from Airbnb turnover cleanings, most of which are not owner-occupied properties. Reason being is because if they're not owner-occupied, there's no one there on property to be there to, you know, vacuum, change the sheets, do the laundry, change out the towels, and do all that kind of stuff. For that, we've been able to hire a couple of people, employees, to be able to help manage a lot of that, do the laundry off-site if necessary, or bring it back to site for the property owners. And then also, we're looking to hire a full-time person to manage a certain group of Airbnb properties that would be restricted if this proposal goes through. If this proposal does go through on those owner-occupied restrictions, then we would have to lay off some of our employees, which we've never had to do before. Also, it'd definitely have a negative impact on our business locally. And we just represent one cleaning company. There's multiple cleaning services and independent cleaners around our city that do the same thing, and they would have a negative impact on their income personally as well. My wife, let's see here, she was a property manager for a large apartment complex for four years before starting our cleaning company. With her experience managing long-term rentals and experience, and our experience with short-term rental hosting, and then cleaning other hosts' homes in the area, we have found that our guests are far more respectful of our property, the neighbors, the noise and cleanliness, than any long-term rental property that she's managed. We go in and clean a lot of long-term rental properties and we've seen some terrible damage done to these properties. Lots of noise complaints. She worked at an apartment complex that would get regular police calls for noise violations and trash and all that. Whereas with all of our short-term rental properties that we've managed and stayed in, we've not had any of those experiences. We also have outdoor cameras that regulate any traffic that comes and goes from the property. If there is a lot of noise complaints, the neighbors of the properties have my cellphone number. They can text me. We've never had an issue with it, but they can text me directly and I can check the cameras and see what's going on. So we, me and a lot of the other hosts in this area are very serious about trying to keep our neighbors happy. One neighbor is having their family come in and stay at the Airbnb because they don't have enough room in their house. So that's a negative impact on a lot of different people and their abilities. So just one quick thing before I finish up. I would recommend the owner-occupied restriction be removed from the proposal and allow the property owners the right to rent their homes to long-term or short-term guests. If there are multiple complaints for a specific property related to noise, traffic, trash, cleanliness, or respect for the neighbors, perhaps there can be a protocol in place to investigate the complaints for that specific property and work out any issues on a case-by-case basis. This recommendation should apply to all long-term and short-term rental properties similarly. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patty McHugh, and guess what? I am not an Airbnb hostess. And I'm here today to share with you my personal concerns as a resident in the city of Lynchburg. According to the Lynchburg.gov website, your role as the planning commission is to serve in an advisory capacity to city council. It is my perception, based on my observations and my attendance in previous meetings, that this commission has heard largely from those in favor of short-term rentals and Airbnbs. I want you to please try to think about my interest. I appreciate the fact that you agreed to have another public hearing because I was not aware of the one that was originally scheduled until the day of, and I was out of town that day and couldn't attend. And you may remember my name because I emailed each of you earlier this year to share my concerns with you. I appreciate and I respect each individual who has already spoken this afternoon, and I agree with essentially everything they've said. What I don't agree with is the fact that 13 years ago, I bought a home in a nice neighborhood. It's small. There are only 42 homes. It was developed in 2005. And at that time, I don't think anybody really even knew what Airbnb was, or maybe it was probably already going on out in California. It just hadn't hit Lynchburg yet. Nonetheless, we've enjoyed a very close-knit neighborhood. We don't have a lot of turnover in our neighborhood. We know one another. We look out for one another. We genuinely care about each other. A little over a year ago, we had some new residents who moved in. And unbeknownst to us at the time, they began to operate an Airbnb out of their basement. We began to experience some problems with noise, with trash, and also the homeowners would leave to go out of town. The renters for the Airbnb would show up and ask the next-door neighbor, "Do you know the access code so that I can get into the apartment?" I live directly across the street. I will be honest and tell you, I have not experienced any property damage and I have not experienced any issues with noise. I have experienced issues with trash and garbage. And we followed the process that we became informed about and reported the, our concerns to the city. We've had a couple of meetings with Mr. Henry and, I'm sorry, what?
Lights. You're exceeding your time. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm done.
If you can wrap that, that'd be great.
Okay, great. I agree that the Airbnb may be a benefit for the community at large, but it does not benefit me as a homeowner. And I would ask this commission to please rethink your definition of allowing such in small neighborhoods that are zoned as R1, single-family dwellings. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. McHugh.
Hello, my name is Missy Phelps, and I'm an Airbnb host, and I also love Lynchburg and want us to work together because we're all better together. So thank you guys for opening up the discussion again today for public comment. Now, I'm sure it could seem like, because I am a short-term rental host, that I don't care about the concerns that were raised here today or in the past related to the nature of people coming and going in neighborhoods across the city. While the Virginia General Assembly did establish a framework by which local governments may now regulate short-term rentals, we're asking you to please not impose any new regulations at this time. Doing so will hinder the strategic goals of the city as laid out in the blueprint for opportunity by hindering entrepreneurship and limiting safe and affordable housing options for our visitors. Developing regulations just for the sake of having regulations is simply unnecessary. Can we please propose regulations that solve both a clearly defined problem and that are enforceable? I agree that residents should be able to enjoy their community free from disruptions or harmful behavior of others. And that is exactly why noise, trash, and parking ordinances were put in place, and that is why we have law enforcement to enforce laws that already exist. So what new problem is this proposal trying to solve? The current proposal isn't a quick fix for any new problems. So are the complaints that are being sent in new problems that no law or ordinance exists for already, or are they merely preferences that could be defined by an HOA? For example, we chose the house we live in because we have chickens, and many neighborhoods don't allow chickens. And that's fine, because that's their preference. I prefer that my neighbor's cats wouldn't come in my yard and stalk my chickens and leave their hair and hairballs and footprints on my cars and outdoor furniture. And I'm sure that some people prefer events like yard sales, March Madness gatherings, bridal showers, or the like, didn't generate more cars on their road, but that's not a problem. That's just part of living in a vibrant community full of people who want to be in this city. While I personally don't know my neighbors' guests, nor do I even know all of my own neighbors, I don't automatically assume that new people appearing in my neighborhood are dangerous or to be feared. I think that line of thinking is very insulting and offensive to the guests that we host, like a nurse anesthetist here to work at Virginia Baptist Hospital, or a professional here to work at Framatone, or parents simply coming here to visit their children. They're not nuisances. They're here for a purpose, and this isn't a problem. We all have preferences, but preferences cannot be legislated because if they could, I would be here asking you to ban cats. At the end of the day, I believe that Lynchburg is a great place to live and short-term rental hosts are better together. So can we please just work together to build a proposal that benefits everyone to solve actual problems rather than catering to individual preferences? Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm April Tucker, and I am not an Airbnb host. I am coming to you today with personal experience, firsthand knowledge of the impact that an Airbnb can have in an R1 residential neighborhood. My concerns are, and I've seen you in other hearings, each of you struggling with what's the right decision in this. I do believe that we can come together. I do believe there's compromise that we can find for our city. I don't have any, you know, objection to anything that any of the Airbnb hosts have stated. I do think there's a place for it and there's a place where it doesn't belong. My first concern is safety. I live next door to an area where there have been nightly guests, not regulated by any number of nights per year, almost on a nightly basis, that I would just, by my personal estimation, say that it was over 200 nights last year. I have had people walk up to me and ask me how to get into the neighbor's house when I was home alone. I've had my children come to me and say, "Mommy, I don't feel safe walking down the street to my friend's house anymore. Would you walk with me because I don't recognize the people coming and going next door?" In our particular situation, you can rent this resident next to us for a very, very small amount of money. And, you know, just because you're affiliated with a local organization does not mean that there is not an opportunity for criminal activity in our neighborhoods. And so that's my number-one concern. I also think that as a planning commission, you know, as I looked at the charter here, you know, to preserve our single-family neighborhoods as they were zoned must be of very much importance. You know, I bought a home here 12 years ago to raise my family in a residential, single-family neighborhood. That's what, I knew full well what I was getting into, did not think in any way that there would be a situation where there was a nightly hotel being run in our neighborhood. Based on my observation from the prior hearings and the press, that there's been enough of it in Lynchburg, you're being lobbied by a very, very small, well-organized vocal minority who are very good at making their voices heard. A vast majority have mentioned the negative impact to their livelihood or their business. They're running businesses in residential neighborhoods without business licenses, and that's really just what, that's what's happening. That's the reality. My recommendation is in support of regulation, especially for R1s and R2s. Based on your own estimation and the outside consultant that you had, there were about 400 short-term rentals in the city of Lynchburg. Best information I've been able to gather is there are about 30,000 taxable parcels in the state, in the city of Lynchburg, which would make that about 1.33%. So based on, you know, just because people aren't here today doesn't mean that this is a minority or a majority. I think you've got to look at the data. About 16,000 of those taxable parcels are located in R1 and R2. So that means almost half of the parcels already in Lynchburg, you know, if we limited this outside of R1 and R2, would be eligible to run Airbnb. There is a compromise that can be had here. And I encourage you to consider all the taxpaying homeowners that live in these R1 and R2 zones, above tourism, above business, above economic growth. We are the people who live here. We are the community, and our families do not profit from these businesses. In fact, in some cases, they're put at risk. So my recommendation is that you would go back to some requirement of owner occupancy for R1 and R2. You would limit the number of nights so that these don't become just full-time, short-term rental properties in the R1 and R2 district. And I don't think that limits tourism or visitation. We have great areas downtown, Fifth Street, Rivermont. I could name many, many. Over in the Ward's Road area, there's plenty of area for people to visit Lynchburg, and I would not want to inhibit that at all. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Redmond. Thank you so much for having us, for reopening this hearing for public comment. I love Airbnb. I use it as a host and as a guest. I love Lynchburg. I've been here for over 15 years. And as my other hosts have said, I do believe we are better together and that compromise is possible. A few years ago, my husband and I bought an investment home in the Fort Hill area. We lived there as well, but this was a non-owner-occupied, so under the current proposal, what we did with this property would not be allowed. What we did was put our own money into fixing it up. It previously had been the neighborhood I saw. I mean, it really had all of those violations between the grass, the disrepair, and associated things that went along with that. So we put our own money into fixing it up. I was home with our young girls, and once we had fixed it up and put on Airbnb, the supplemental income helped us a great deal. It's now the nicest house on the street. It's safe. It's clean, and the neighbors have, as we've gotten to know them, have appreciated our efforts. Because of the Airbnb option, we were able to put our money into this and improve the home, improve the neighborhood, and improve the property values. And I want to remind you that anything we couldn't do ourselves, which is kind of a lot, we hired out. That meant a local electrician, a local person to reglaze the tub, a local landscaper, a local plumber, local tree removal, local roofing, local cleaning, local photography. That's usually me, but I'm local. This is generally the approach for all of my hosts. We hire people in this area. Are you noticing a trend? Are you noticing a trend? We live here, we hire people here, we spend our money here. I also want to bring back the topic of how many people we're bringing. The previous speaker talked about data. Keep in mind, if we've had 30,000 visitors, that's a low estimate for Airbnb, and only 11 complaints, that's less than 1%. So, the data is telling you that this is a nonexistent problem. The visitors we bring are people who would not come otherwise. They do not have an affordable option to bring their families when a husband or a wife is doing a week-long intensive. If they're coming for a wedding, they want to have a week to just enjoy the process and everything leading up to it. And so, they need space to spread out. Why over-regulate a thriving system that is bringing positive visitors and money to our city? We know they're positive because of the low amount of complaints. We know they're safe, because we wouldn't place our own homes and our own neighborhoods, like mine in Fort Hill, at risk. This is a great option for our city to grow, because it is self-regulated. Because of private investments that are improving our neighborhoods and the additional tourism and revenue from the thousands of visitors we bring, we need to welcome more Airbnb rentals, not over-regulate the ones that we have now. The examples that Patty and April gave of their neighborhoods frankly are poorly managed Airbnbs. I think most of my hosts would agree with that. You should never have to wonder what your code is to get into a property. If you've used one, you know that. You know how to get into it. So, the situations brought up are unfortunate, but they are not the norm. Don't stifle a growing avenue of revenue and tourism. To over-regulate is to address a nonexistent problem. Help us tell everyone that we welcome here why Lynchburg is a wonderful place to live, work, and play. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Oh, you sign your name?
Yeah.
Hey, everybody. I'm Jimmy Rufus. I am a real estate broker here in town with EXP Realty. I'm also a Property Owner Association President at 51 11th Street. That project probably never would have happened if it hadn't been for the possibility of short-term rentals. There are several very large projects on the books to go downtown. I'm speaking to, not, I do occasionally host, but usually I like to have the extra property downtown when I have an overflow of guests. But occasionally, I do rent mine out as Airbnb. I have lots of friends that do. If we pull this and over-restrict it, and by no means saying there shouldn't be some restrictions, it would affect the property values across the board in several of the downtown areas I know of, simply because the demand for investors in our market won't buy those units. And the units that we bought, I wouldn't have bought it if I didn't think, "Oh, you know, I can occasionally Airbnb it and make some money." So, I'm looking at it from, let's not create a vacuum and stop the economic development that's going on downtown. We have for 20-plus years, probably longer than I've been here, and I've been here 25 years. I've been investing in Lynchburg for 25 years. If we create a vacuum, similar to the vacuum that we created by Lynchburg College, when we really started to heavily police the no more than three unrelated people in a single-family dwelling together, we created a vacuum in that neighborhood and it took a little while to recover. It did. Lynchburg's strong. So, I would just like to say economically, let's think about the impact, the long-term impact, the property values, the taxes. There certainly needs to be regulation. Certainly needs to be put together as a team. So, I appreciate your time. I will not regurgitate all the other information. I think that's been covered. Y'all have a great one.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good afternoon. My name is Johanna Calfee. I wanted to thank you all for taking the time. Over the last couple of weeks, quite a few of you have spoken with my husband, Daryl. He wishes he could be here today, because he is a better public speaker, and I don't like a target on my head. However, he actually is in Austin, Texas, on a work-related assignment at an Airbnb. And no, we didn't plan it, I promise. Daryl and I have been renovating parts of Lynchburg for the last 15 years. We're on our, we're guessing 25th property. We kind of lost count somewhere along the way. We really kicked off about 12 years ago downtown on a little known street called Commerce. Back then, as you all remember, you're a volunteer group, you've invested a lot in Lynchburg as well. Back then, Commerce was still a little bit touch-and-go, but like many in this room, we took a risk and now have done residential, have done commercial, have done pretty much everything, and are currently working on a project just up the street across from the Virginia and at 801 Church Street. And we do plan to have an Airbnb in there when it's finished. But I just wanted to quickly point out something, and this isn't to create conflict with people in the room, but just to point out that the two ladies that spoke against this earlier in the room, as frustrating as I would find that as well, I also live in Boonsboro. We all work to keep nice homes. And I would not be super happy if my children felt unsafe as well. But just to point out that these two that spoke live in the same neighborhood. And so, I would just say, don't let a few voices in the same neighborhood disqualify the many across the city. And I would say also that, from my standpoint, perhaps first and foremost, those who have had challenges, that first, this is a neighbor-to-neighbor issue. I would just ask if they have spoken with this neighbor to see, I'm sure that they have, but for others who have had conflict, if they're talking with their neighbors about that conflict. And also, is there a neighborhood ordinance that these neighborhoods, like Bethel Park, like Irvington Park, like Waterton, could create to exclude them from Airbnb? I certainly think that could be an option. And again, a few dictating the many outside of those neighborhoods would be, I think we could all agree, a mistake. Lynchburg has long prided itself, at least as long as I've been a part of the community for the last 20 years, on progress, on insight, on growing, on welcoming those from the outside. And I think we would be doing a disservice to not try to seek solutions in all neighborhoods across the board to allow Airbnb to flourish throughout the city. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Dominique Jendren and I'm a host, Airbnb host, here in Lynchburg. I'm also super-host. And I just want to speak off the cuff or make a couple of comments. Moved here three years ago from New Orleans and I wasn't sure I was making the right decision, but I know I have from the day I set foot in the city. So, I think I'm a great ambassador for the city and being an Airbnb host also allows me to share my passion for the city and the environment. But I just wanted to acknowledge the two comments that were made about the, some of the challenges that are posed by Airbnb, such as trash and noise and a sense of insecurity. So, appreciated the comments that were made about that. I think we need to, as Airbnb hosts, feel extremely responsible for what we're doing and how our actions are impacting the neighborhood, mostly in positive ways. And I think that most of us, I would say 99% of us, are really great hosts. And I think perhaps for the few who are creating these problems, we need to do something on our own, knowing that Airbnbs are self-regulated. I think we ought to regulate also ourselves in that respect. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Hey. My name is Ginger Christmas. I'm from Lynchburg. Thanks for opening up for comments this afternoon. Appreciate that. A few years ago, well, first, I come to you as a businesswoman. Yes, I am an Airbnb hostess, but that is almost beside the point in what I would like to visit with you about today. When I became a widow a few years ago and divested our businesses in my husband's estate, I needed to look for what I was going to do next, what the next business was. I have a degree in business and that sort of thing. So, I was up in Maine and I began to look for the place to come, and that place was Lynchburg. I love Lynchburg enough to move from Maine. I have seven children, a bunch of grandchildren, all over. None of them are here in Maine, but they're all over the world. None of them are here in Lynchburg. But I came here because I love Lynchburg. And yes, I do have an Airbnb. I spent time particularly reading your short-term rental memorandum and the ordinance that y'all have put together. A lot of work there went into that, 117 pages on my iPad. And, you know, I had a concern. If you'll forgive me, I'd like to tell you a couple of things that came to my attention as a businesswoman. Airbnb, as you've heard, is big, you know, worldwide certainly. But more to the point, there are a couple of, no, not a couple, but I'm going to concentrate on at least one in the state of Tennessee and one in the state of Kentucky that have had incredible impact on the finances of their cities. And, and this is what I want you to forgive me for. I think maybe, possibly, we're being a little short-sighted. From when I've done business consulting and I've found that people have councils, have been in a position where they really had to protect themselves with liability, they had to address issues, sometimes they would do it quickly, because obviously you want to close some doors and make things safe. It would be my recommendation that you would consider a task force or maybe a steering committee, looking at what Airbnb can do to benefit Lynchburg. Particularly in Kentucky, in the city of Louisville, you know, that's where they have the Kentucky Derby. They followed in the footsteps of some of the other Airbnb cities that went, partnered with Airbnb themselves to collect tax. And so, they expected to collect less than $500,000 and they collected over 1.1 million in the first year. I would really recommend that you stop and consider, if you would, the incredible economic impact Airbnb could have with your guidance and with folks from the Airbnb community, folks from the community, and be able to consider with your blueprint for new businesses and things, that you would be able to consider the incredible financial impact that Airbnb could have for you. I have done hours of research, as I close, days of research, that I'd be glad to share with you. I'd love to be a part of that committee, or at least provide that information to the committee, because I think that Lynchburg could really set the bar for the whole state of Virginia. Thanks so much.
Hi, I'm Joe Payne. I live at 4724 Heritage Drive, have for the last 27 years. My wife and I came down today to listen and I feel compelled to speak. We are in support of the R1 regulation as proposed for short-term rentals, for annual registration, and for owner occupation. Our experience is, last summer, house across the street from us, which has a pool, was sold. Within a couple of weeks of the new ownership taking place, we noticed, one neighbor and myself noticed, that the house had been placed on Airbnb. We discovered, after looking at it, that a lockbox had been placed on the house, much like realtors use. And a system had been set up through the Airbnb site, when you went to the house, that you could contact the owner, you could rent the house, you'd never meet the owner, he would give you the code to the lockbox, you'd use the house, and that was that, so that the owner never saw who was actually in the house. The second B&B resident resulted in a police raid at 1:00 a.m. in the morning for a pool party gone out of whack. And that's the first time in the 27 years we've lived on Heritage Drive that there's been a police raid of any sort. And large parties came about, pool parties specifically in the summer, through the rest of the summer. Other things we noticed, Monday morning, there'd be two large garbage cans overflowing with garbage. And of course, they're not supposed to go out, since pickup is not till Wednesday, they're not supposed to go out till Tuesday night. And so, occasionally, I'd have to walk it up the street, we'd have to pick up garbage and put it back in the can. Then we noticed, or I noticed, that the cans were supposed to be picked up, and when they're emptied on Wednesday, they're supposed to be picked up before Thursday morning. And they weren't, and they would be lying on the street. So, eventually, I'd get tired of looking at them and I'd pick up the cans and wheel them back up into the garage of the house. The yard was not maintained as the other neighborhood yards were, it was simply not maintained as an owner-occupied house. I understand Airbnb. My family and I have used it from time to time over the years, and also with VRBO. And they are convenient when they're done properly. And I do believe that property owners have rights, but unfortunately, the old saying, "One man's rights end where another man's rights begin." I think it's important that it should be regulated, because I don't think it self-regulates itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Emily Reimer and I'm an Airbnb host. I have five properties that I take care of over the city right now. And thank you guys for reopening this discussion, by the way. So, I have multiple concerns. My primary concern is the assumption that additional regulation is needed to take care of these complaints. I know the three violations were proposed and, I should probably just read what I wrote, but there's so much I want to say. I'll just read it. "While I have multiple concerns about the proposals before you today, my primary concern is the assumption that additional regulation is needed to pacify the citizens who have complaints. Through reliable systems and platform based almost entirely on reviews, Airbnb is set up to self-regulate and does so very effectively. For example, in order to book a stay through Airbnb, the hopeful guest must at a minimum provide their full name, email, confirmed phone number, introductory message, payment information, and they must agree to the house rules specified by the host." Some rules that I have implemented to help maintain the peace in neighborhoods are no drugs, no smoking on the property, no parties, no loud music after 9:00 p.m., and every violation that occurs at my Airbnb, there's a $200 fine for that. So, we haven't had any issues, even though I have a house that sleeps 12 people. We've had no issues or complaints from anyone regarding any of these matters. Furthermore, if a host doesn't feel comfortable booking, the host can request that they provide additional identification. And if the host is still uncomfortable with whoever is trying to book their house, there's no obligation for them to accept the booking in any way. I, for one, wouldn't host someone with questionable character, because I don't want I for one, wouldn't host someone with questionable character because I don't want them coming to the, into our city where I plan to raise my family. I know many other hosts feel this way as well, as you've heard. This brings me to the proposal regarding the violations, provided that three violations relating to the use of the property for short-term rental shall result in the revoking approval for the property to be used as a short-term rental, to address a lot of these complaints that are already systems in place that handle these issues. And I'm a part of a group of 100 hosts that don't want any one host or one property to shed bad light on the city of Lynchburg or the rest of us doing this. But this proposal is not specifically the answer. For one, it's a little bit vague. These violations cannot be simply based on complaints with no opportunity to rectify, no statute of limitations, and an unlimited timeframe. Rather than pass something that is so unclear, perhaps we could create a task force and have city officials and Airbnb hosts work together to determine what's going to be best for our city. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Blanchett. I was not planning to speak, I'm definitely not as put together as all these other people. I would like to say that I've lived in Lynchburg my entire life. I live in a R1 zone neighborhood. I actually share a neighborhood with one of you wonderful people. I'm entering my fourth year of hosting an owner-occupied, it's 1,100 square feet on one side of my house. It was originally built as an in-law suite, so it was an addition that we added on. For my grandmother, she has since passed, so we've decided to rent the property because it's just a big house to take care of and who wants to clean all that? And to get extra money. So I would like to say that the house that we own, lots of you probably will be familiar with, the house was vacant for 12 years and was involved in a very lengthy lawsuit with the city of Lynchburg. We had the house that everyone in the neighborhood called about, everyone in the neighborhood complained about. I cannot even tell you the stack of papers were there for how, just fines for not mowing the grass. So we have bought the property, we obviously invested a lot in the beginning because we weren't planning to do a short-term rental, but we've had so much money come in that we've been able to hire so many people, like improve the property tremendously. Like we've had several people come down to our house just to introduce yourself to say, "Wow, like you guys have done so much with the house, everything looks so good." I also own a long-term rental in the exact same neighborhood. And I could tell you that of course, you know, with long-term rentals, here comes your typical long-term rental crap. My neighbors have, of course, have my phone number to be able to call me, but I have a lot more issues with having to go over there, "Hey guys, you going to take your trash can in or you going to leave it at the end of the road all week?" Just because I live in the same neighborhood, I don't want to drive by their trash can five times. "Hey guys, you going to mow your grass or do I need to find you and get someone to mow your grass?" So I have none of that obviously going on at my Airbnb because I'm there at the house, I have everyone's vetted, I have no issues, I have no safety concerns. In almost four years of doing this, we've actually met numerous amount of people who've come in. My children have played with them in our yard. We've gone to the park actually with some people that we've met. We have numerous return guests who come with their families. We have new neighbors that moved in across the street, their family just stayed with us and they literally just moved in. Like it's been nothing but positive for me and I think for my neighborhood as well. We do not have an HOA, but we do have a neighborhood watch. And so, you know, it's just, everyone kind of looks out for each other there. So I just wanted to bring my points as far as the zoning, because a lot of people are not speaking on that. I just feel like Airbnb has done nothing but improve our neighborhood. And I think that most of my neighbors would agree, I've not had any complaints, but of course, you know, you never know what can happen. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carl Miller. I live on Morningside Drive in the city of Lynchburg. I currently own and rent two non-owner-occupied entire homes in residential zones. I want to thank the city planners for opening up this conversation again. I do have multiple concerns about the proposals the city is considering putting into code as regulations, but want to talk about the proposal to ban non-owner occupants from hosting in specific zones. As a real estate agent, I represent buyers who are investing in homes in this city, both as owner occupants and as investors. And I think one thing to keep in mind is that residential R1s, R2 zones are legal to operate long-term tenants. I've had short-term properties for 10 years, started in Bedford County with one that I owned for 10 years. And I can say, after owning numerous residential properties, I've had no complaints whatsoever from my short-term rentals, but I've had multiple complaints with my long-term tenants, including having the police called out numerous times and nasty evictions and spending tens of thousands of dollars fixing up properties that my long-term tenants trashed for me. I know some of you are property owners as well and you probably have dealt with that. I've never had that issue with my short-term tenants, ever. Short-term property owners spend tens of thousands of dollars on a property to furnish it nicely, they keep the exterior and grounds beautiful and inviting, and they make it a beautiful place for the people visiting Lynchburg to enjoy. And I think that that is one key difference between long-term tenants and short-term tenants. And while I appreciate the concerns that were shared by some of the neighbors, I think that what they are experiencing is probably an anomaly among most of the short-term rental hosts that are here tonight. I would also concur with what has already been shared, that I believe that it would be in your best interest, the city's best interest, I should say, to commission, to pull together a task force of other hosts to get some input. I think there's a way to do this wisely, but I think the proposals that are being presented right now really would have some long-term negative effects. If you think about how many homes, how many host nights were put into place last year in Lynchburg, using conservative estimates, there was at least 30,000 host nights from the 400, almost 400 rental properties in Lynchburg City. The number of complaints is very miniscule and I believe that there is a much smarter way to make this a win-win for the city as opposed to just squashing the opportunity that I as investor have in residential properties as non-owner-occupied host that can allow families to get together and enjoy a great experience as opposed to just putting a squash on this. And I also would advise you to reconsider opening up a lodging tax because I know you've talked about the $150 registration fee, but a lodging tax quite frankly would be able to easily bring in $150,000 of revenue and there's a way to do that wisely and smartly. I would just urge you to consider that option. And I also would just need to urge you as well to open this up to a task force and get some smart public input so that there's no regrets for the folks who have already invested thousands of dollars into their homes. I think if you pass this the way it is, it's going to ban a lot of existing homes that are in position right now that are very nice properties that have improved the property. And I'll lastly finish up as a Realtor. I recently tried to sell a house that was right next door to a long-term property that was just trashed. We had it on the market for six months, we couldn't, we couldn't sell it. Conversely, just last month, I sold a house right next door to a short-term rental. It was fixed up beautifully and it sold for $20,000 more than the rest of the homes in the neighborhood because it was next door to a beautiful property that was a short-term hosted home. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Dawn Decker and I would like to hopefully bring forth a couple of points. I'm a teacher in the city of Lynchburg and I was actually here till 5:30 last night talking about the budget. When I moved into Lynchburg, which is over 30 years ago, I did not plan on having teacher pay frozen for the last 10 or 15 years. Eventually, I had to look elsewhere and with a family and being a single mom, I did not want to go outside and get a minimum wage job. So as the Airbnb market came, I thought about it. Before that, I tried long-term rentals. People trashed my property, they didn't pay, and I had, I ended up losing a lot of money. I have fixed up several houses through sweat equity with my dad. I've had property in the R1 because I didn't know about the occupancy rule that I have fixed up and has bettered the neighborhood. The house that I sold on Fort Avenue that I paid 130,000 for and resold it for 310,000 because I had Airbnb after long-term rentals did not work because there was apartment in the basement, so I could fix up that property that as a teacher I would not have been able to do otherwise. I looked other ways, other places and other things when I realized I was kind of in the position I was with my salary and looking towards my retirement that's hopefully in the next 10 years. As a supplement, some of these people have said it's a supplement, it is a supplement. It gives me the opportunity for upkeep on the house that I do live in. It gives me supplement so I can purchase a house for 35,000 and when I'm done, hopefully it'll be a price at 150,000 in a neighborhood. And they are R1 neighborhoods. Those are the neighborhoods that we need to bring up the value. Long-term rental is not an answer. They trashed it. The other thing is the Airbnb, and everyone's talked about the self-regulations, but they also offer a huge insurance policy. So if something does happen, either liability or damage in your property, it's covered for a huge amount. There was one property not in Lynchburg that their house burned down while they were using Airbnb. This is a stupid thing, they didn't have insurance, but they, Airbnb had the insurance policy and it rebuilt their property. There's so many things. I would not be able to do what I do if there is the owner occupancy because me and my three daughters, I don't have room in the small house that I live to do it. I need to do it at a different property. The $150, I don't do it all the time. I also run out to the baseball coaches. So there's a lot of things in the R1 neighborhoods that I choose to live that it's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tiffany Cummings. I'm not a resident of Lynchburg, but I went through the debacle in Lexington when they went back and forth with their rules. First, I was called by the Commissioner of Revenue who turned out to be a great friend as I worked through getting caught up for the state taxes and paying the taxes for the, to the city of Lexington to catch up. The difficulty was, just when the Commissioner of Revenue got really good at it and so did I and so did the other residents who were Airbnb doers, the planning board, based on a few people who probably didn't like, I really think it was motivated by not wanting strangers that didn't look like them in their areas, because we do get a lot of international people, people of color in Airbnb, that they started scaling it down, they were concerned about parking. It wasn't about complaints, there was maybe one complaint that sparked it. So they scaled it down a lot. I was moving out of the community, so I didn't go to any of the hearings. I used to work at Sweetbrier, lived over there, bought a house over there, ended up coming back here. But I would say, if you really do want to get a handle on it, the things that they did well were that people got business licenses, they were asked to let the building inspector come in and look at their home and make sure they had a fire extinguisher and make sure they had smoke alarms. That kind of made sense, but when they started scaling it back and saying owner occupied, it does not seem fair to say owner occupied when you let landlords have full-year people living in them without owner occupied. And I'm not going to say, "Oh, that's way worse" or whatever, it's all dependent on circumstances. I think if the city wants to worry about ne'er-do-wells and bad things, I think you'd be better off going on a massage site that will show where the massage parers that give happy endings are. Perhaps that's a better use of time to make our community better. There are lots of other things that we could be policing. I hope you all are, remain friendly to Airbnb. If you need to make it fair to the hotel owners by charging the same amount of tax, that may cut some people out, but if you're looking at fairness, be fair. Treat them the same as landlords and treat them the same as hotels if you are going to do that. But what you don't want to do is end Airbnb and people start going on Craigslist and to put up their three-month, because we've got a lot of travel nurses coming through. You don't want that going on Craigslist where you're more likely to have crime, you're more likely to have people that have not been at least a picture of their driver's licenses on there and if they do do something, you can find them and they're not fake. And then my doctorate's in women's studies and anthropology, so I know a little bit too much about bad things happening to women, so, or kids or whatever. If you're worried about what a stranger's going to do in your neighborhood, the statistics are that the people that hurt women and children and other people are people they know, family members and family members, neighbors, people that have time to groom them. Airbnb is not going to be bringing in the bad people.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll bring this back so the next person can talk.
Good afternoon, my name is James Mashburn. Thank you again for this opportunity. My wife and I do host a couple of Airbnb sites. We, like most people in this room, took properties that were ISOs and rehabbed both of those properties. And actually, we rehabbed the third property for my son and daughter-in-law. We've had, I can't even tell you the number of people as we were rehabbing these properties that came by and thanked us for doing so. The second one that we rehabbed was actually a townhouse in a complex and it was right next to the HOA manager of the complex. And so we established a good relationship with her and, you know, let her know what we were doing with the Airbnb so that we were very forthright with her, what we were doing. And she was very thankful, she was a little skeptical because there had been a long-term renter and that's what had destroyed the property and really made the entire complex look pretty bad. And so we had completely rehabbed it and we've never had a complaint. We've been super hosts now for this past year. And again, you know, I can't tell you how many people have thanked us for rehabbing it that live in the neighborhood. Not only that, but we, we've got three, it actually has four bedrooms and most of the families that stay come for weddings or they're large families. And most of them would not come to Lynchburg, period, with a large family because they wouldn't be able to afford two or three hotel rooms. And so, you know, we get to see every single comment that people leave for us and we get to leave a comment. And the Airbnb community is a pretty tight community because we stand up for each other. We've had to deny tenants because of their reviews of past Airbnbs. And we're very forthright, if we have anything in, you know, of any of our tenants, we certainly put the truth in our review of them and we expect the same from them. I will say that we do have a neighbor in our own community, in my own neighborhood, that she has parties late at night, she leaves her trash out, her yard is very unkept, hours, the party's hours of the night. And I will say, I wish that she were an Airbnb host because I guarantee that her house would not look the way it is if she did have to have guests in her house. Thank you.
Excuse me, did you sign your name?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next person. You can come up. You can come up, no, you can come up, just managing the list.
Yeah, I was just getting the sign-in sheet ready.
Can you guys clarify upon the, before or against, is for under regulations or for Airbnb, you're arguing that?
No, I think.
There's a mix of issues out there, ma'am. And, you know, this is not a head count thing, anyway, so.
Most people seem to be against, no matter what, no matter what, how it's laid out. So, you know, I think it's.
Against what?
Most people seem to have something that they oppose this for some reason or another, no matter how, yeah.
Not Airbnb.
The ordinance.
The ordinance itself.
Hello, my name is Peter Alexander. I've been a resident in Lynchburg since nineteen eighty-five. Recently came as probably a transient, will wind up starting a family here and establishing a couple of businesses. I've been involved with rehabbing multi-unit properties, spec houses, single-family homes, and been also the president of homeowners association. So I have a little bit of a background with this, and I wanted to say from the onset that I am in favor of the changes that the owner would not need to be present in the property. Additionally, I agree with no maximum of related persons, but disagree with only for unrelated. I think some consideration should be given to that regarding the amount of bedrooms in a property. I understand you don't want to create a property that, you know, will have a human trafficking influx, you know, and/or a, anyhow. Also, I think the hundred and fifty-dollar fee is reasonable, and there's been several concerns expressed here today regarding the condition of properties. I think the only, the only way to guarantee that is if you have an HOA, or if you live in a gated community. I think most of us have been around long enough to be able to observe personally the changes that occur in neighborhoods over decades. Lynchburg itself being a prime example, for the past several decades, this has become, it has had substantial changes throughout neighborhoods, throughout the entire city, particularly the marvel from downtown. That's really an incredible achievement. However, I would like to say that, that the people that are actually implementing this short-term rentals are entrepreneurs in spirit. They have vision, they have motivation, they have dedication, they're willing to do what it takes to get this done. Some things should be also considered. The hard work that actually goes into this, they personally are involved in the cleaning, upkeep of the properties, which you've heard the short-term rental platform will never replace the extra perks of a hotel, and that's been some discussion given to that. You know, in a hotel, you have food service, pool, spa gym, daily cleaning, the front desk receptionist. The short-term rentals that the, actually, the people actually save the money are, and typically, there's more than one day, there's actually several days, sometimes several weeks. They will spend that money locally in economy, so it will go against a plethora of other local businesses. And that helps to buoy all the other businesses, rather than just one particular business that being primarily maybe a hotel. The owners are proactive and motivated in maintaining their properties, again, positive feedback, which is essential for continued success in renting. Feedback from guests also find chinks in a home armor, such as a faulty light switch, possibly peeling paint, one less than stellar review, and you'll remedy that quickly. And it is hard work. I'm almost done here. Let me just say also, the human aspect that we really, is really hasn't been considered. In the human aspect, it provides an element of cultural exchanges as well. Meeting your guests, you realize how connected you are to these different people from different backgrounds. There is also a common human bond that connects us all. People come as guests and they leave as friends. I think it is quite a, it's quite an experience, actually. If you never experienced, I used to tell my sons, growing up, get the travel, do as much of it as you can, because it's probably one of the most benefiting and rewarding experiences of your life, and most educational, one of the most educating experiences of your life.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. No one else wants to speak on it? Well, maybe no, there is no one else to speak, so that, that means if that's the case, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to discuss this here, and we've got a lot of, a lot of things to mull through here.
Before we get into discussion, and Mr. Martin, if you've given us this information before, I'm sorry if I've forgotten it, or, but can you tell us, or I hope you have this available, of the three hundred and sixty-five short-term rentals that you've been able to identify as best you can, how many of those are in RC, how many in R1, and how many in R2? Do we know that?
I don't think we're able to identify that, because what we were given were dots on a map, and they were not specific addresses, so it would be really a guess.
Speculation.
Speculation, yeah.
So where do we start?
You know, maybe as just a procedural suggestion, trying to think this through, what I had done was taken Mr. Martin's excellent memo, and I know he and the city staff have spent a lot of time on this issue, and as we've discussed, we appreciate that, and whatever we recommend to city council today, I am certain that there's going to continue to be tweaks in this, this whole area as the industry matures and as it evolves. So if you're not happy today, you may be happier with city council, you may not be as happy with city council. My suspicion is, over the next five to ten years, this is going to be, continue to be a hot subject of discussion. But with that said, my thought would be, so we can get some order and hopefully come to a conclusion on our recommendations to city council today, that maybe we follow Mr. Martin's outline and just go down here, point by point, of the ten issues that came out of the last meeting, and see where we are on those, and if there are any changes or any tweaks, or whether we're in agreement on those, and that can get those issues finalized, and we can finally get to a conclusion on this. Just my thought, procedurally.
I think it sounds like a good plan.
So Mr. Chairman, you want to lead us through the?
Yeah, so, you know, number one, if we look at one and two, it doesn't seem to be that much discussion on those. You know, most of the issues that we've heard today that are against the proposal kind of fall in the number three, the number five, three, four, and five areas, and probably less four than anything. So it really comes down to the number of people, it seems to be, or the allowance of these in RC, R1, or R2, without an owner occupancy requirement. So some of the things that people said is, you know, that, you know, why do you have this? And I think the owner occupancy does impact the hotel competition, because nobody's going to rent their home out, living in it as much as a hotel would. So I think there's little, to me, I feel like there are subtle nuances in everything that we look at, and that's what makes it hard. Someone mentioned there was a lot of gray, and there really is, you know, even to the point of the idea of the business model, that this is a business, and how do we treat other businesses in the RC, R1, and R2? I don't think we do treat business in those areas. So I think that if we look at the number three first, might be the best way to go. Start there.
Yeah, well, I don't, yeah, I agree. I didn't hear anything that would influence one and two, and I agree, a lot of the discussion focused on three, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't know what one and two are. Does somebody come? Do you have that, Tom?
Number one is defining a short-term rental, is being less than thirty days.
I have a little bit of a problem with that, in that, yes, that it would be the definition as of the thirty days. Does that mean we have to restrict it to thirty days? Because there are people who like to come to Airbnbs and stay for forty-five days. They might have a six-week, you know, stint here for some reason, and rather than stay in a hotel for six weeks, they might want to stay in an Airbnb. So my problem with the whole thing is that Airbnbs do not fit in a little box very well, as some of these people have said. They don't, they're not hotels, they're not single-family homes, they're a different animal. So they're not long-term rental, and, but why couldn't they be more than thirty days? Is there some rationale that they couldn't?
Yeah, but then to be long-term rental over thirty days, so it does, I understand what you're saying, there's problems, like, for the first few months, it was a long-term rental, and then you have four rentals, and it becomes a short-term rental, and then it goes back to a long-term rental when the nurse moves in for six weeks. You're saying that's a difficulty, that's a problem.
Is that, well, because then you have, we have different standards for long-term rental and short-term rental. We have, you know, only three unrelated people allowed in long-term rental right now, and we, at the moment, are saying four, or it may go to more, for short-term rental. So I have a little bit of problem with restricting it to thirty days. If that's one of the restrictions, that I don't understand why it would be there, though I understand it being a definition of short-term rental, so. Just wanted to bring that up.
Well, I think one thing, too, that makes this complicated, and this is stuff that I've been struggling with, is, let's start where we started. At this point, there are limited, there is no structure around a short-term rental.
So many of the horror stories that you've heard, many of the horror stories I'm sure all of us can bring up, have come with, really out of any recourse to go in and set up any enforcement for it. So the thing that got delivered to us was, sorry, I didn't realize how much I was doing, but the thing that's gotten delivered to us is, how are we going to put a structure around this? This is a brand-new situation. It is something that's growing, it's obviously something that's going to grow more. The problem comes is because, one of the things that we've talked about is preserving neighborhoods. And it's going to be difficult for me, as we think about, well, how do we protect, how do we protect the neighborhood while we allow this opportunity? I think, and I apologize, I forgot your last name, but the idea of property rights is a big deal for me. And I think to use your property and to use your assets is a big deal. And I think it's something that is important, and it does allow for innovation, and it does allow for a sampling opportunity, if you will, for Lynchburg. And there have been a number of cases where people have said, I've really benefited from that. That being said, as we think about what we're going to put in place, everybody we've talked to has been, you know, a five or approaching five-star host. The reality of the situation is, everybody's not a five-star host. Bad news is, some people are going to be limited by the bad behavior of others. The other situation is, we live in an evolving community. I grew up in a neighborhood, when we got here, everybody on the street had kids. Every single house had kids in it, and that wasn't the only neighborhood. Kids, the neighborhoods we played in, every single house had kids. You come by those neighborhoods now, guess what? No kids. They're growing up. When I was in sixth grade, we moved to a neighborhood that had virtually no kids. You go by there today, it's full of kids. These are the changes, these are the cycles that are taking place, and we need to think about how we're going to build structures for that. All that being said, you know, as we go through what we have here, I don't, I would be hard pressed to say it was perfect, but I do think it provides some structure for us to add to things that are already in place. I think that Airbnb is going to have a much more effective, much more, certainly from our standpoint, cost-effective way to control who comes in, and both on the host side as well as on the guest side. I don't know that we're going to be able to build a system that's going to work that well. If we supplement that with what we have in place that says, you know, we're going to police, we're going to identify you, we're going to police your behavior, neighborhood's going to have to have a, it's going to have to have a role in that. Neighborhoods, I mean, neighbors do now. And I think we have things in place to do that. So I think it's fine to tweak this, but I think at the same time, I'm not sure we're going to get something that's going to appeal to everybody. But we've got a monster, not a monster, we've got something that's growing that we don't really understand at this point. I don't want to restrict it, I don't want to shut it off, but I don't want to give it free rein, either. And I think that's kind of where we came. So as we think about what you're going to look at, remember, we've got to manage a balance, and we've got to manage, as Champ said, a situation where this is probably going to evolve over time. So, you know, my thought is, to get to the action in the moment, is, if you think about tweaking, what would you change, and what would be the benefit of the change that you made?
Well, and that's to my point, is to let's go through, you know, number by number and see. You know, Nancy brought up a good point. Philosophically, I've struggled with the thirty days myself. You know, I wasn't going to say anything about the thirty days, though, but, I mean, let's go by these, number by number, and see if there's a consensus, or whether, Mr. Chairman, you want to take a vote on each of these numbers as we go through them, as to whether anybody wants to change the wording or not. That would be my suggestion.
Can we vote on each?
Sure.
Number separately?
Yeah, absolutely.
Or do we have to amend it? Amend the ordinance and vote on it?
Well, again, procedurally, and Mr. Martin may have a different opinion, and I would like to hear him, because he always has great wisdom to share with us, but my thought is, we go through here, and number by number, see if there's anything we want to tweak to this proposal that he has submitted to us. And if we can reach a consensus on it by number by number, that's fine. If there seems to be some strong feelings that we can't overcome on a particular tweak on a number, Mr. Chairman, you may want to call for a vote on it by that number, and at the end of the process, when we get to number ten, hopefully, we'll have a document, and everybody may not have agreed with every tweak, but we'll have a document that we can use as the motion to adopt that's consistent with what we tweaked to send on to city council.
Right, and I think, and we have done that, like, I think that was the day you missed, we actually went piece by piece, and some of these, you know, like, could you explain, Mr. Martin, the, again, the thirty-day, the reasoning behind that?
Okay, so there's been a couple of things thrown out. I think it's perfectly reasonable to go through this section by section. Again, this is the fourth time the commission has discussed this, and the draft before you came strictly from the commission and the discussion you had. So this is not anything new that staff has put forward. So at some point in time, the commission had agreed on this, okay? So the thirty-day, thirty consecutive days, did that come out of the state code? That's where that came from, is state code. So to me, I think it'd be relatively simple to go through section by section, because I believe there's really only two, maybe three, main issues to this. And if I could suggest something to you, I think you should start your discussion on what constitutes a business, because you've had just about everyone, if not all, that spoke to you this evening, described it to you as either entrepreneurial or a business, it was their business. And I think that's a key distinction, and I think you should hear from the Commissioner of Revenue on what that means, because if you look at the data, rather it be anecdotal or what, you know, some of these structures, if they're rented at seventy-five dollars a night, ninety percent of the year, which is what one gentleman said, they're generating in excess of twenty-six thousand dollars, right? And I don't believe that's, there's no tax on that, is it?
There would be, thirty-dollar license fee.
Okay, so, I mean, that's one thing, and if you open up, if it is a business, and you open up the residential areas to a business, what's next? What other types of businesses do you want to open up your residential neighborhoods to? Is it deemed a home occupation? No, because they're not living there. But that's one question. But, that's one question. The next question is, in the RC, R1, and R2, should the owner have to be there? Okay? And you said no, but it would have to be owner-occupied, which means it would limit the, the number of other structures that someone could own if it wasn't their primary residence, right? So, absolutely correct. Other people have pointed out that if, if you wanted to buy a piece of property in R1 District and rent it long-term, you could do that, and no requirements for home occupancy. The key, though, which gets us to our next point, is the number of occupants that can be in that dwelling unit, which is limited to three. So, what you're juggling here is, okay, if it's a short-term rental, so it's on a short-term basis, does that give you, does that make you comfortable enough to allow more people in it for a shorter period of time? And if it does, that's fine. But on the other side of that, what you need to discuss and come to terms with is, if you bump this up to four, why wouldn't you bump up every other dwelling unit to four? Where is the equity in that?
I guess my point on this, I think you're exactly right. And the only thing I'd add to what you say before I get to answer this, I think that really drives the conversation about, do you want to treat, uh, do you want to have separate regulations for R1 to RC, and then separate regulations for everything else? Because I think that's where your commercial conversation comes from. Because I think that, the thing for me about this is, this is a flexible, the way it's written now, um, opportunity. And I, and, and that's, and that's not the same as a long-term rental.
Right, I, I think it would be very simple, and I know this isn't the answer, but, you know, if you just said, no more than three unrelated individuals, no more than thirty days, that's very simple. It doesn't have to be owner-occupied, you could move forward. What you have struggled with for, this is the fourth time, is, is for an adequate number. Because you get two couples that want to go together, so.
And I, I feel like we had, we had settled on four unrelated, because having four related then limited a family of five. So I think that was, that was one of the things that we did go back and forth on, I don't.
Said four individuals. Uh, I'm not sure if it said unrelated.
Because if it's unrelated, that, that is a little bit different than four, you know, four individuals is different than four unrelated, because
Correct.
You see what I'm saying? So I think, I feel like that was something that we had thought about, and we had said, well, I think it should be four unrelated, so if there was an opportunity for a family, you know.
Doesn't help the knitting group.
Doesn't help the knitting group, though. And it doesn't also address, you know, some of the questions about, well, if we, if I have five bedrooms, that means, well, I can have a family of ten, you know, because they're, they're all related. But, um, you know.
So, so those are the main things. But I think to Commissioner Light's point, if we go through this point by point, we'll eventually get there. So the thirty days is state code, that's where that came.
Okay. Can I just say something about the thirty days? The way that's worded is, it's hard to read through that pink blob, but, um, to provide room or space that is intended to be occupied for a period of fewer than thirty days, consecutive days. And that, that doesn't mean, you know, well, I intended to only stay thirty days, but I'm, I'm going to stay another two weeks. So, you know, that was my intent. I think, I don't, I mean, I'm not going to belabor this one. Let it, let it, let number one go the way it is. Because I have a feeling that if somebody wants to come and stay at an Airbnb for, for six weeks, that host is going to say, sure, come on, slide on through, you know? I'll just say you came for thirty days, and then you came back for fourteen more.
And I don't think it restricts them from doing that.
No.
I don't think, have that definition actually restricts you from having somebody in your house for two months. It just, then, that, that stay doesn't fall under the regulation. Which then changes the amount of people, then it goes back to the three people. It kind of falls then under a different regulation. So I think that's, we, you're right, I don't think we should spend a lot of time.
Get off of number one and.
So we got number one and number two squared away.
Right.
And, and I would argue that we have
Ria.
debated all of these. No one has brought up number one from the public. Only, um, so really, the two main topics are numbers three and five. And I, I would think, unless someone has a major issue with the other eight, we've debated them many, many times. And we're probably not going to change them.
Right.
It's really three and five. And I think we could make the best use of our time by just focusing on those.
And the pink blob is not something I came up with. It's, it's on the projector, it's not on.
Yeah, and, and I agree, those were the two that I was focused on, was three and five. I would just ask.
Although it's kind of cool, if you look at it, it's kind of like a face.
Since Commissioner Knuckles is here, I would like to ask him, just to reiterate my understanding, is, it's, as, as the system is presently designed, the collection of the hospitality tax, the lodging tax, is unenforceable on, uh, short-term rentals because of a, of a lack of a system to do it. Is that correct?
And that, that's correct. And also, the thirty days, through the General Assembly, is coming from copying the lodging tax. The lodging tax is restricted to thirty consecutive days or less.
I see Mr. Feroli back there, is, is, do you have a, a something, some information? Not an argument, but some information you want to share with us.
I do not mean to contradict the Commissioner on revenue by, by any means of imagination. I do know in conversations the Alliance has had with some of the hosts here today, that there is some format where, um, each individual platform can come to an agreement with the city, and the city receives a check from those platforms. Now, I don't know if that's different than this conversation or not. I just, I wanted to make it clear that I, I do not think that is entirely the case. I do know VRBO may not have that situation, but I know Airbnb may have that situation. Again, I'm not the expert on the topic, but I do know.
Yeah, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have you, since, it's the chamber, I know there's hotels involved. How, how did they weigh in on the same conversation? Are they involved as well, as well as the hosts are in this conversation?
The conversation we had was strictly with the Government Relations Committee.
So it didn't involve other members, like, like hotels?
No, sir, we did not consult them for their information. But I just wanted to bring that up, so.
So, I think what you will hear from the Commissioner of Revenue is that there's no way for the city to actually audit these people, these platforms. So we don't know if they're really reporting everything or not, right? Or if, if Mitch's office had to go out and do this, you're talking about a tremendous amount of staff time to do it.
You know, I'm all in favor, and I know that the hosts that we've talked to before, to their credit, had all said they were quite prepared to, to, to pay the lodging tax. I haven't heard any short-term host say that they weren't. That would be my preference. But in view of the practicalities of what we're forced with by the collection system, when, when we get to the vote part, I'm, I'm going to vote with number seven, but that would not, as it's currently written, but that would not be by my recommendation. If you're able to figure out a better mousetrap, uh, Mr. Knuckles, you'll be the hero of the city. Because, uh, I, I think we'll get that kind of revenue that Louisville, and I can't remember who the lady was, that, that brought up a couple of these cities that have evidently reaped a financial, and it'll, it will equal the, the playing field a little bit for the hotel owners. Because I have gotten an earful from the hotel owners about this over the years.
Well, that is, that's definitely, Airbnb especially, has where you can sign the agreement. And they'll collect and remit the tax. There's some horror story articles out there about them doing that, but they're out there.
Okay, are, are we good with thirty days?
Yes, sir. So we can get back to, so we're back to number three and number five? I didn't mean to get off on a rabbit track, but.
Yeah, we're good with thirty days.
Okay.
But now we're back to three and five.
We have agreed on that in the past, so.
And I think we're good with that.
Can everybody nod your head? Everybody good with these districts?
Number two, yes.
So if we can look at number three, and just start there, you know, and this is another one that we, we agreed on.
Correction.
But not unanimously.
Correct, that's correct.
Right, not unanimously, we had a couple of people, so. And that's one of the things that a lot of people have spoken out about. And for me personally, you know, there are several reasons why I prefer this. Number one, I prefer the R1, R2, and RC, and, you know, as single-family neighborhoods, you know? And we are not in the business of, I feel like, trying to develop business in the city, but really trying to look at the way the land is used. And so I think those, you know, we backed down from, from what we had. It had been, you know, broad, really broad. We had adopted these policies all the way through the districts. And we backed down, so let's protect these single-family districts. So, I think that's one of the things that I feel strongly about. And then the other is, if this is just about property rights, then really, that argument would say, we should allow anybody to do whatever they want with their house, and no one in here would say that's right. And so I think, I think it's almost like a red herring. It's not, it isn't really a true argument, because we, we really do restrict use and, and, you know, zoning is constitutional, so.
And another good point was, I think we, I'm not saying we should open the gates. And I think, you know, what we're doing, to a large extent, part of our process is to put things in place so that problems do arise, there's quite frankly something to enforce, which we don't have now. And my point on the property rights was, I don't want to tell somebody they can't. That's not the same as, and I think Mr. Payne brought it up, that's not the same as you can do anything. I think, my point, to get back to, so we can get back to, to the discussion at hand, I think, I, I can't imagine a better way to control, um, the, you know, bad experience in having it be owner-occupied. And, and that's where, that's where my, that's where I fall on that. And I feel pretty strongly about that as well, for those, for those properties, types of properties.
Well, here's where I am on that. I, I live in a small neighborhood in a historic district. Um, there are Airbnb's in my neighborhood, and I've never had a problem with, I know of two of them, there might be more, um, I only know about two. One is owner-occupied, the other one's not. Never a problem with either one. My problem would be if one of you who has, you know, one, two, three, four, five, wants to buy three, four, five, six, seven in my neighborhood. And then that single-family feeling of my neighborhood would go away. However, I don't want to restrict any of you from having three, four, five, ten non-owner-occupied Airbnb's either. I've been to Airbnb's in other cities that were not owner-occupied. There was somebody who came in and cleaned, and we talked to that person, but not the owner. They didn't live there. Perfect experience. I don't want to stop that from happening. I think they're two different animals. I think the owner-occupied Airbnb is one thing, and that could sail through with these regulations that we've got. Uh, not all of them, I would discuss how many people could be there. But, the non-owner-occupied is a different thing. I, I, the last time we voted on this and didn't quite finish voting, um, which is why we're back today, I agreed with it, but I, because I said, anybody who wanted to make a business out of this can always be a B&B. They can go get a business license, and they can set up all the B&B's or, and rent them as Airbnb's that they want. They don't have to, well, maybe B&B's do have to live there, you're right. But, you can set up a business, or, or what I would advocate would be to set up a separate category for non-owner-occupied, and we have a different set of restrictions. One being, and this is something I read about today, perhaps a limit on how many, how far, how close together they can be. That you might have to have X number of feet per block between Airbnb's, so that you can't sell every house on the block, and they all turn into Airbnb's. That is one way to make it different. But, I do think they are two different things, and they should be treated differently. And, and I don't think they both fit in the same box.
Interesting, hadn't thought about that.
I was just at a Lynchburg Association of Realtors Broker Continuing Education class just before I came over here, and the Richmond attorney who works for the Lynchburg Association, represents the Lynchburg Association of Realtors was there, and he, he works in Richmond. And I asked him how Richmond handled Airbnb's. And he laughed and said, it, it's, it's been crazy, and, and they've tried to come forth with ordinances in the past, and they get thrown out every time, as do the counties, because they're terrified of, like, lawsuits and restricting property rights. I did not agree when we put in the owner-occupancy for these RC, R1, and R2. I still feel that way. I feel that it's, it's limiting, you know, telling somebody that, that they're allowed to rent their property for six months, but they're not allowed to rent their property for less than thirty days. I, and I do think that, that the, the other things that we have suggested here as far as the ordinance does have some protection with, with knowing the, you know, what they are, having people register, then, then the city can regulate, you know, the, the things that, the violations that might happen. And, and the three violation rule could, like, for instance, possibly, you know, in the property of, of you guys in the back, you know, that, like, you, you said that there were probably two violations that happened, you said, you said that it had already happened. So, one more violation, and, and if we vote this through, you know, then, then that one would be gone. You know, they, they wouldn't be any, allowed to do it any longer. Um, you know, and, and as property owners, Lynchburg does have ordinances, and, and we, you know, you're not allowed to have loud parties past a certain hour, you're not allowed to have trash, that we all regulate now, just as single-family owners. So, that's not going to change. I mean, that, that, that's still, we're, we're regulating that now. So, um, I, I, I just, I, I don't agree, I haven't agreed from the beginning of having, having the owner-occupancy.
Yeah, and you, you stated very well, I'm not going to repeat everything you've just said, Ms. Johnson, but I, I agree with everything you said, and I'm not in favor of the owner-occupied provision either.
One of the things I consider when we get a petition is, will it change the character of the neighborhood? And if it does dramatically, then I typically don't support that petition, even though that means someone's not going to make money. And that's how I view number three. And one reason why we brought this up this way, and we did relax, relax the restrictions, was, some of us felt that it would change the character of the neighborhoods at these lower densities. And I still feel that way.
Can I ask him, what way do you feel that it would change the character?
Um, I live in a neighborhood surrounded by no short-term rentals. And if that were to become short-term rentals, it would be very different.
What about if it?
And I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying it's different. And part of our, we've talked about this at other petitions, people, when they buy into an area, they have a right to maintain that character, that's what they bought into. If you're buying into something that already has existing short-term rentals or long-term rentals, you get what you're getting. But to change things after the fact does not respect the property rights of the other owners.
But the long-term rental can happen anytime. It's, it, you can buy into a neighborhood that doesn't have any long-term rentals.
That's, that's true, but we're not talking long-term rentals. We're talking short-term rentals.
And the difference too with long-term rentals, in my neighborhood, I've had long-term rentals. I mean, some of the people have rented there for longer than I've been there. And, um, they are part of the neighborhood. I know their names, that, you know, you can go borrow a cup of sugar from them, but you can't do that when it's, you know, a very nice person who's coming in for a two-week stay. But they're, you're not going to know who they are, and you're not going to feel comfortable going over and borrowing a cup of sugar if they had one.
And our job, I don't think, as individuals, is convince other individuals to change their minds and agree with us. We rarely send something to City Council that's unanimous. And I don't see us being any different here. Where there's going to be parts, numbers here, that it's not going to be seven-zero. And I think that identifies this as an important issue that Council has to explore in more depth.
Well, let's, let's be clear, though, when you send this, it should be a recommendation on the entire ordinance. And if that's four-three or five-two, that's fine. Which, obviously, what you guys are going to have to struggle with is, are you opposed to this so much that you would vote against the entire ordinance? And that's fine, but when we send it to, to Council, they'll be able to read the minutes, but we're not going to send them each section with a vote on it.
No, but they're going to know what those votes are.
That's correct.
So, you're right, we're sending them all or nothing, but they're going to know, these are the hot topics. And again, we are not going to come to agreement as a commission on some of these.
And they're going to hear the same exact arguments as we have.
Well, I'm sure everybody else will.
What I propose for the long, the non-owner occupied is, as I said, I see it as a different category. I would like to establish a separate category for non-owner occupied, short-term rentals, by which they don't, they cannot by right buy up a house and make it a short-term rental. However, they can, through the conditional use process, get permission to do so, but their neighbors are going to be aware of this, and there's going to be a sign put up in front of their house. And if all the neighbors come out and say, no way, now, that, that would be unfortunate. I, I hope that wouldn't happen, and it probably wouldn't happen the first couple of times unless this person who's doing it has a bad rep. But if they have a good reputation for keeping their properties wherever they have them in good shape, they're probably not going to get any pushback. However, um, if there's already one here, 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 and here, so there are already five of them on the block, there could well be pushback from those remaining people who say, look, we're losing the character of our neighborhood, enough is enough, we've already got four. And, you know, we've talked about this many time, who, times, who is the last one to get to come in, whether it's the last apartment complex because it's gotten to, too many, you know, cars on the road? And why should they be penalized just because they are a year after this guy? But, that's the way I think this goes. If, um, I, I would rather see non, non-owner occupied, uh, Airbnbs or short-term rentals be by conditional use only. They are the ones who are most likely making it as a full-time business. They don't live there, they're hiring the help to clean it and do all that stuff. So, they're running it as a business, they can go to the expense of getting the conditional use permit process.
Would that be for all districts or R C, R one, R two?
I'm just going with R C, R one, R two right now, because I, I was okay with it in our three, four business districts, they could do it by right.
And I, I agree, you know, and I've talked to several people, I know some of you have talked to me on the phone, you, you can with an Airbnb, you know, Airbnb, you can get a bed and breakfast permit, you, you can do that. And, and the limitations on people fall away. But then the neighbors actually get to vote on that. They get to like come in and say, hey, we do or we don't want it. And I think that's one of the things I'd find, is a lot of people would, would say, it'd be interesting to see what people would say in their neighborhood. Mr. Martin?
There's a, there's a distinction with tourist homes and bed and breakfast. So, tourist home bed and breakfast is defined as a dwelling occupied and such in which sleeping accommodation is less than six rooms, with not more than four persons per room are provided or offered for transient guests for compensation. Key here is under the management of the occupants of that dwelling for dwelling purposes, okay? So there's a managing occupant living in that. And then when you go into the R one and R two, it's limited to three rooms, two persons per room. R three and R four goes up to five rooms and four persons per room.
So the numbers could fall away, but the occupancy is still required?
A management.
Okay, yeah.
An occupant managing. It doesn't mean it's the owner, but somebody's living there managing that B and B. So that's the difference.
Can you correct me if I'm wrong? Doesn't the, doesn't the conditional use permit transfer with the property? So if you have a new owner, they still have that same conditional use permit?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So it can still be sold as a?
Well, my, well, the, what I'm thinking about is, is some, you know, we've got some older neighborhoods, and they're going to cycle through. And as they cycle through, you may be very thrilled with that person doing it, and you're not at all thrilled with this person doing it, or what our, the other situation is, you catch somebody, you catch a neighborhood midway, and you end up with, with several CUPs. And, and I think that, that's, that's my fear, is that you end up with a, with a bunch of, with a bunch of situations, and I think the CUP could, could, could have a way for that to happen. And I think logically it would happen, just because of the way the neighborhood cycles.
Well, then maybe it's yet a different kind of animal, and it's not a CUP.
That's a great idea, I was definitely, because I was happy about that at first.
Well, yeah, I, I agree with what you said. I, I wouldn't want it to transfer with the, with the property.
I remember Tom telling us that before, and I remember thinking that didn't work out as well.
I think the issue with that is, do you really want to hear 345 conditional use permits for short-term rentals?
I didn't want to go there.
Well, I, I wish we could streamline it, I wish we could do it like the HPC allows, well, you still have to, you still have to advertise it to the neighbors, because that's the point of it, is the neighbors should be aware of it. But I do think if you had some limits to how many in a particular neighborhood, so that it doesn't become an Airbnb desert, that's my fear. I mean, would you like it, Cham?
No.
If all of your neighbors suddenly up an Airbnb their house and moved out?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's the struggle, that's one of the things, and Mr. Peralt's right. I mean, I've been in Airbnbs in, in hot tourist cities like Paris, and they, there's not a neighborhood in some of those areas anymore, and that's why Paris is, has adopted, as I understand it, a, an ordinance that you can't rent your Airbnb more than 25% of the time. And, but that's, that's what I'm saying though, this is an evolving process for us. So, I mean, what we do here today, and what city council does when they consider it, there's not a doubt in my mind, in two or three, five years, this will have been tweaked three or four different ways. And, uh, personally, I don't think that, that my whole street is going to end up as, as, as Airbnbs. And just like I've got some bad actors on my street who own their homes. And, you know, when you hear the concerns that are absolutely legitimate concerns about people that come in and are short-term renters and leave trash and party and, you know, detract from the neighborhood, I hate to say it, I've got some of those people on my street that, that own their own homes. So some of the, some of the issues that we hear about the short-term rental situation are consistent with some of the complaints that we have about people that own their home. And that, that's just the way it is. But as I said, what Mr. Peralt said is a, is a good point. We don't want, just like you, you know, questioned me, no, I don't want my street to turn into an Airbnb desert. But, for the reasons that I've said already, I'm going to, I support what Ms. Johnson has said about the, the issue of the owner occupied. So, you know, I think, I think, I feel like we should discuss this and number five, and actually just vote on the whole proposal, as Mr. Peralt was saying, you know, there might be, we might disagree on one of them, but, you know, the, we're, we're the planning commission, the city council will vote on, and that will be binding, this is, we're just making recommendations. So, um, is there any more comment on number three? Can, can, do you think we can move on to number five? I do think, you know, there's, there's quite a few issues. I, I do think it's important that we recognize that things will change. In fact, even if you look at the structure and the taxing, that's bound to change. I, I don't have any problem with the, the auditing abilities of the Airbnb. I just think it's a model that actually not everybody fits in right now, so.
I think it's going to grow and it'll make everybody.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to bring up one point. How about the, all of the people that, that own multiple properties, that if, if, if this got voted and it went city council, you know, I mean, I, I just, I feel really, I mean, how, how do we handle that? Do we grandfather them in? I mean, should they be grandfathered in? I mean, that, that could be financially devastating to, you know, depending on how many they own.
And we discussed that, but I, that's worth.
No, I, I completely agree, but again, with other petitions, you can make the same argument with developers. I mean, it makes or breaks some of these folks, whether or not they can put in an apartment complex.
But, but that's.
And we don't look, we don't consider that.
Well, here's the key, the zoning administrator has issued the opinion that short-term rentals
are permitted by right in business districts and in owner occupied residential district properties subject to occupancy standards. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if someone is out there that has bought these R one and R two properties and they're doing these short-term rentals, it is not in compliance with what the zoning administrator has given the opinion on.
So we do have a short-term rental ordinance right now?
He's issued an opinion on how they've been, uh, being allowed right now.
But, but it's not an actual ordinance?
No, it's his interpretation of the existing ordinance.
How long has that been in effect, this opinion?
Well, I don't, I don't.
Three years.
Three years.
So if there was a change, and you, this, went to city council and they, they voted as written, what is the, what is the, what is the process from there? Because we do have people who said, I have two in an R one that I don't live in. So what's going to be processed for them?
Go ahead, yeah.
There's a grace period.
Um, that we've built in with the registration program into the ordinance, um, you know, so there would be some, some months that would elapse from the time that the ordinance was adopted to actually the point in time that folks have to register.
But, but essentially they would have to cease doing their short-term rentals, or their Airbnbs, they would have to go long-term.
Or sell the property.
Or sell the property.
Yeah.
Or sue the city.
Or, or.
Yeah.
That's correct. Assuming what is before you is adopted, yeah.
Yeah, right. Or there could, I mean, could we look at it a different way, and I don't want to complicate it, but if you have a piece of property in the R C, R one, and R two, you can rent it to no more than three unrelated individuals, right? All day long, long-term, that's what you can do, right? Well, what if, if it wasn't owner occupied, it was limited to the same thing that a long-term is, right? But if it was owner occupied, you could do, maybe you get the four. See what I mean? So it's progressive. And then if you wanted to run a B and B and have even more, then you have to get the conditional use permit. There's not going to be a perfect solution that's going to make everybody happy. So you're either going to have to try and come up with some type of compromise, or you're going to have to be, just say this is what it's going to be and move on with it.
And that address people who come for two weeks to visit a daughter.
So that, and it's, it's no more than three unrelated, so if a family wanted to come.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And we're only in R one, R two, and R C.
Correct.
The downtown, the whole downtown is B something, right? Or down.
B four.
B four, and that's fine, you can have as many as you want in.
No, you can't have as many as you want.
But, according to the building code, or is it four?
The zoning ordinance right now says you can have no more than three unrelated people per dwelling unit. So it's, it's kind of like you're, okay, if you do it short-term, and you're, you're doing this entrepreneurial business, we're going to let you do more than anybody else. And that's fine if you want to do that, but, you know, where's the equity for the rest of the city? And the rest of the dwelling units?
So if, if you were to recraft that, with that kind of wording, what, what would it look like?
I think you would, I think you could say if it's not owner occupied, it's limited to no more than three unrelated persons. If it is owner occupied, it's limited to, um, no more than four unrelated people. And that's really the same way it is now, because if it's owner occupied, you get your family plus one in the first unit.
But it then allows non-owner occupied in R one?
Right.
Yeah.
But it's limited to the number of people.
Yeah.
And that's not going to make everybody happy.
Nothing, nothing will probably.
Well, I could, I'll tell you what my dad used to tell me later, but anyway.
So what'd you all think about that? That kind of amendment to it?
I mean, I, I know, I, well, I just want to say that, that I know that downtown area is business, but, you know, when you, when you get into the historical area, which I think is, is very, you know, conducive to, to Airbnbs, you know, that, those are, are two. So.
I'm in all threes.
Hmm?
I'm in R three, historic area, R three.
Well, I'm just looking at Harrison Street, it's R two.
Yeah, some of them are.
Right, I'm just, I'm just.
The historic districts are generally R two. And they're also quite large houses, you could get 10 guests in one of them without them ever seeing each other. So, I have some problems with the limit of four. That's why I keep saying this is a different animal, it is not a long-term rental, it is, I mean, I would not want to rent out a long-term rental for, with, to 10 people. I, I don't want to rent out a long-term rental at all, but, because I've had experience with that. I think that the Airbnb model is excellent. I appreciate all the, the good hosts who are all great ambassadors for Lynchburg, and they're also entrepreneurs, and I don't want to stifle any of that. I think as long as they're there, or they are as, you know, all these super hosts that we've been hearing from, they're not going to let bad things happen. But, um, I don't want them, I don't want them to take over my neighborhood either. That's, that's my, that's my thing.
That's the tension.
I, I'm going to behave myself, I'm keeping my mouth shut. I acknowledge the constitutional right to own private property, it is our right, and we should be able to do what we want on our property. Likewise, my next-door neighbor has the same right to expect privacy on their property when they're buying into a neighborhood, not to have to be sharing it with Airbnbs. Mine just went to sleep. I'm torn on that because I don't want to see neighborhoods turned into a series of Airbnbs, change of the complex of a neighborhood, whether it be for five years, 10 years, 20 years, multi-generations. And then go back the other direction there. We have people that have bought their homes and have argued against apartment developments and everything in R one areas, because, you know, 30 years ago, someone bought a house that was zoned to R one with the expectation it's going to be an R one neighborhood till the day they get planted. And that we should not just say, okay, well, we're not going to let you have rental houses or Airbnbs right next door to you, and you're going to have a constant changing neighborhood makeup. And that, that's a hard one to deal with. And, I can compromise my feelings by saying, okay, well, that's the owner of the house, if, if the person wants to have Airbnb in their house there, then you stay in that house, and you make sure that house matches and conforms to that neighborhood in which you want to put it in. And so you stay in that house and you rent it out as Airbnb. That doesn't mean you can't go to the grocery store, you can't go to the beach or whatever, because we've heard those arguments, don't have a problem with them. The number of individuals in the house, that, that is a problem. And when this first came out, and we first discussed this in 2030 January, I made the comment, why are we wasting our time doing this? Because it's totally unenforceable. And Tom rolls his eyes, he's cringing right now, I'm sure. And I understand the reason why we have to do this, because if we don't have something established to set parameters, the, everything runs amok. And so you can't enforce something if you don't have a rule to enforce. And things were going great until someone obviously upset the apple cart. Where, what, we had four complaints? Now, how, if we'd been running Airbnbs for how long in the city, and it's just now coming to us, you know, what happened? What caused us to get to this point? We already know we are not staffed to enforce this document. Airbnbs can police themselves, I have full faith and confidence. It's going to be that one person that upsets the apple cart, and Tom and his officer will have to go out and investigate it, strike one, strike two, strike three, $500 fines, a whole nine yards. But this being a college town, what concerns me is, someone's always going to be out there to game the system, and we cannot stop that. What bothers me is, okay, I got Airbnb, I can put four people in there, and so I can put four college students in there. And one college student is going to have the rent, that's going to rent it for 30 days, his lease is up, his buddy rents it for the next 30 days. Those 30 days is up, buddy number three. Those thirty days is up, buddy number three goes and rents it for thirty days.
They're going to be rich college students.
And they also.
Well, I mean, when you look at what, if you look at what board costs at university, you know, it may even out. You know, you've got four people doing that. And I'm not saying that's what kids should be, college students should be doing, but there's that potential to happen. And we end up having people abusing the system. And I don't know how to prevent people from beating the system. You know, I always look at ways to beat the system myself. And um I don't do it as much as I used to. I reckon I've gotten several of my ways. But we need to protect the R one, R two districts because the people there bought into a concept. They bought into a neighborhood, RC as well. And how do you prevent it from changing? I mean, we don't, we can sit there and tweak this all day long and city council is going to do what they want anyway. But no, at least I've, I can face myself in the mirror when I cut myself shaving. It's going to be because I'm clumsy, not because I I couldn't make a decision, but this is the best way I can come up with saying, okay, we did something to try to prevent, to protect the natures of the RC, R one, R twos by putting restriction on it. Okay? You know, a smart person want to game the system, they're going to find a way around it. I promise you, they will find a way around it. And you'll never know what's happening because the people that are going to game it know how to do it and do it right. And you're not going to be able to stop it. You know, and the maximum number of individuals, you know? They're not going to go every month, every week, go check on how many people live in there. We know that. So I mean, we we have something that we can start on. And if someone's going to game the system, they're going to game the system. I'm not saying that people need to go out and game the systems and the rules and the ordinances of the city. They're there for a reason, for a civilized society to live by. But now at this stage, you know, we're we're trying to protect dreams, we're trying to protect the entrepreneurial spirit that we need in our society. And I fully applaud the entrepreneurial spirit. I have created a corporation before from nothing, all the way up to all the way back down. You know, it it takes a lot to be an entrepreneur, to go out there and do something and take that risk. And I don't want to say, no, you can't have an Airbnb. But no, the same token, how do we regulate something that, you know, that really can't be regulated?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that brings us to number five.
No, we're not.
We talked about number three a lot. That brings us to number five, the number, that number, and I think, to me, the the one thing I see is I'd like to see that, say, four unrelated. So so that so that it wouldn't limit family size. That would be one change I would really want to see. And you know, just a reminder, we've, we really have backed down a lot of, you know, when we started, it was the R one, R two, RC, owner had to be there all the time. And then we said, okay, the owner doesn't have to be there, but they have to be the one who's the primary resident. So so the numbers are the the other thing. I feel like we've really kind of gone be way beyond where some of us were even comfortable with that. Um, so I would like to see that, say, unrelated simply so that we could have families to get, if it was a family of five, like my family wouldn't be restricted from staying because I've stayed in Airbnb myself.
I I I'll be too with you, uh, muscle. It went over my head there. I thought it was for unrelated at the end of last meeting. Because it was the thing, if you had two couples, whether they're married or not, staying there, that's what why it was changed to be for, not understanding it was supposed to be for unrelated. Obviously, I missed that or misunderstood that.
I think she thought it was unrelated. Yeah.
You thought it was unrelated too. So I mean, if I could change anything, I would change that to not to exceed four unrelated individuals. That way we could have the the two couples, whether they're married, what, whatever.
Right.
Well, and I'll, oh, and I think Mr. Ferrodi brought this in the memo from the the Business Alliance. I don't think we had talked about having it predicated on persons per bedroom as opposed, that was a a thought that I hadn't had before, and I appreciate that. And it, I found him, I found him very persuasive now, but still think there needs to be a limitation. And I started to think about the typical home. And I came up with, you know, you don't get many homes with over five bedrooms. So my thought was, uh, change the the wording on number five to the maximum number of occupants in a short term rental uh would be no more than two persons per bedroom, not to exceed ten uh ten individuals. And and remove the 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 requirements that they'd be related. Now, again, this gets back to what are we doing to the neighborhoods? You know, we're going to let people that aren't owner occupied rent out a house with five bedrooms to ten people. And yep, I mean, that's, that is an issue.
We let the knitters come.
But we let the knitters come that way.
Yeah, I think, yeah, Mr. Ferrodi, I mean, he was taking that from a business perspective. You know, so I think that goes back to that argument of business versus the, you know, really one of those arguments of the non-owner occupied, the person who's the investor who's buying places and the person who lives in it. You know, so.
I I would support number five as is or adding unrelated. I think changing the numbers that extremely. And again, that would, this is going to be something that we're going to revisit.
Yeah.
If if you go back to twenty sixteen and the year before that, we discussed the same things that you're discussing now, limiting occupancy on the number of bedrooms, you know, this and that. The data that you haven't seen, if, and Kevin, I don't know if you've got it readily available, we've only had a that many zoning violations or complaints on short term rentals, but the vast majority of our zoning complaints are the number of unrelated people in a in a unit. Do you have those numbers?
That's correct, yeah.
Is that for short term rentals?
No, it's across the city.
But that includes short term rentals.
But most of those are probably for long term rentals.
Um.
Because you've got a lot more.
Most of them, yes. You know, there's three different kinds of occupancy cases that we'll typically deal with, rooming houses, um, too many unrelated people is the second one. And then the third one is the short term rentals. And I kind of all group that into occupancy violations. That represents forty five percent of the zoning cases we deal with in the city. The next closest is twenty percent, which is illegal businesses. So almost half the the cases we deal with in the city and that are zoning violations are occupancy related. So Tom is correct that this was, you know, debated back in twenty sixteen and is a very important topic as far as the community is concerned.
It was a number one topic in all the public.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But again, short short term rentals, Airbnb specifically, are so different from long term rentals. I've had long term rentals and I know that, you know, people will rent it for X dollars and cram as many people as they can in there if if they can. But with Airbnb, you have X number of beds, you provide the furniture, you provide the towels and the sheets and the soap and the coffee. And you can, you control that and you keep it, you're not going to get the complaints, I think, unless it's traffic. And if you get the traffic complaints, then that is warranted.
Well, if I may, the reason for all three of those type of occupancy complaints are all the same. The reason why people are complaining is because parking, because of noise, because of trash. Regardless of it being short term rental, they will complain about the same type of stuff on long term rental. They are related, um, you know, these occupancy cases. Yes, we might call one a short term rental and one long term rental, but the reason why neighbors are complaining are for the same exact reasons.
One of the reasons that, because I would think back to twenty sixteen, because I was on the commission back then, we're dealing is primarily with the the student situation, how many students can you put in a house? And where they're, where were they living?
It's a mix. It's a mix. It's not always necessarily students. Yes, that's, that can become prevalent um in some areas of the city, but you know, it can be um, you know, lower income folks that are trying to group together to save on rent or something like that. Yeah.
Let's link, swing the sword a different way. Those, as I understand it, those violations were communicated to you via neighbor complaints, correct?
That's right.
And then you were able to 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 um enforce that rule based on what was written?
Correct.
So just to be clear, there's no, there's no occupancy squad that sleeps around like ninjas and counseled people in your house. Not now, probably not in the future.
Yeah, and like I said.
We have, so to to Kenzie's point, you've got laws in place that say, I have a problem with my neighbor, you know, or or in this case, how many of my neighbors? So so then a complaint's made and they find, yep, you've got five. You know, that, but that's the, but that's a process that already exists, right? We're not making something new.
That's correct.
Just, so a couple of things. One, it was unrelated. So the bullet on the screen was wrong, the way it was advertised and the way the ordinance was actually drafted was unrelated. No.
So so my point, so my point being, at the end of the day, we've put something in place that now gives us a structure to answer that.
Right.
To answer that, or pretty effectively answer that kind of problem.
The issue with that is, is that it it takes, and Kevin does zoning, Kevin does not work for me, okay? So let's make that clear. So Kevin is going to have to go out and start building evidence and a case on this. And by the time that's done, the short term rental is probably over and gone. So I'm not sure you're going to even have time to build a case on how many people are in the short term rental or.
That's correct. It'll be difficult.
What do you say? Even even the taxing issue, I mean, very, very few of the things we really do in our neighborhoods are, we're really in, have good enforcement bodies that can manage them. So I think having the framework is really important. And you know, it is an argument for not having it, saying it's not enforceable. So I think that's all the more reason to can, just, you know, really work on this and create something.
I I'd like to throw out another, um, I'm back to what Commissioner Light said, if you have five bedrooms, you could have ten people, that, you know, I'm not saying, I advocate that, but I'm not a hundred percent against it either. I would say that we should be able to administratively approve, just like if I'm going to have an Airbnb, I'm going to pay them a hundred and fifty dollars, I'm going to fill out a form that says how many bedrooms I've got. And if I've got five bedrooms, so I could potentially have five cars pulling up to my house, I better have five parking spaces available for those five cars. If I don't, you, before you approve this permit, can say, well, wait a minute, you've already got, you know, only two available parking spaces on the street and you don't, you're not providing any off street parking. So this is, this is going to be a problem I can see right now. And so I think, depending on the size of the house, the size of the amount of parking they've got, if they've got off street parking, then it could be approved administratively. And you could then, when somebody complains and says, well, they've got six people staying there, you can say, well, they have been approved to have six people stay in there. But if it be is a problem, if it's because of noise or, you know, they bring in six cars or something like that, I just think these are things we could get a little bit ahead of instead of restricting it right now, making a lot of people mad so they can't do what they have been doing and have been planning to do. If if there's not a problem with what they're doing, I don't understand why we're making it illegal for them to do it.
So here's the issue with that.
All right.
The way the ordinance is currently written, what you're saying, basing it on the number of rooms, if you have five rooms and two people per room, you can come down here and get approved for five, ten people, then why would anyone come down here and petition for a conditional use permit to have a bed and breakfast, right? That requires them to get a business license and only be limited to three rooms with no more than two?
Well, why don't you charge more for fi, if I'm coming down to get a license for a five bedroom Airbnb, I'm not going to pay a hundred and fifty dollars, I'm going to pay more.
Because the point is the transient occupancy coming in and out of the neighborhoods that your comp plan says you are going to protect. That's what it says. So it should be a progression in what you allow by right and what you require special approval for. So right now, the ordinance says three rooms, two people per room under management occupancy requires a CUP. If you want to go somewhere different, then you should change that too. But if you want to allow it by right, it needs to be somewhere in the middle between what's allowed by right and what's required for a CUP. Otherwise, the whole ordinance gets out of whack. Do you, do you, do you see that?
I see, you're talking about the occupancy. I see Airbnb's as not at all the same as long term rental. They are different.
Well, how are they different than a B and B? That's short term too, right?
Yeah.
Even more short term, short term.
I don't see them being much different from a B and B. Though, the difference is, we have three hundred and sixty five of them, we don't have three hundred and sixty five B and Bs. And we have people who may just want to rent, you know, five times a year when Liberty's having homecoming and graduation and whatever. But you, so we're going, we have all different kinds. We have people who do it occasionally, we have people who do it as a business. That's why I'm saying they should, there should be a difference. We we shouldn't try to lump them all in one box. That's why we're having so much trouble.
I think that's exactly what you're discussing, but I don't think you should go beyond what you require a conditional use permit for. I mean, to me, that's.
Well, I agree. If you, I I I'm kind of for a conditional use permit for five bedrooms, that's fine with me too.
Tom, can you bring up the definition of unrelated again, please?
Well, it's related.
So related include people who are related by blood, are married, or are in a substantially similar relationship? Now, I mean, to me, that's, could could mean people are dating? I mean.
Common law marriage.
Yeah.
Those types of things.
Or, I mean, I I just think it's kind of vague. So. I mean, I'm not rewriting that or wanting to rewrite it. I guess I'm just saying that I just think that leaves some, for, if we said for unrelated, it kind of leaves some.
Which is why we got.
Open ended, you know, reasons for somebody to have more people than for unrelated people.
Realistically, and Kevin, please correct me if I'm wrong, but realistically, that's why we started with the number of individuals. There is no way that I think Kevin is going to be able to go out there.
I agree.
And check to see if these guys are related. Are you going to be, really be able to do that?
I have a DNA testing kit in my car.
Along with your chicken scale.
Yeah.
I think we, we threw it unrelated partly to address some of the concerns by the owners. And I think a lot of what we're trying to do here is compromise.
Right, and I think you had done that.
And so I, and I go back to the fact, to me, this document is a good starting point. Items three and five are not perfect, but I just don't know what we can do to change them to make them that much better that's going to make everyone happy.
Again, I I think, I don't get a vote, but again, if you consider for the ones that aren't owner occupied, limiting the number of people to no more than three, then it's really not much difference than a long term rental. So that that might be a way for you to think about it. And I'm not saying that's perfect, and I'm not saying that's what you should do, but that might be a solution. Now, I think the, you know, the the guys out in the neighborhoods, you know, I'm not sure what you're going to do to to fix that problem. You know, people coming over asking for security codes and and the trash. And the only thing that would fix that is the documented violations, right? You know, three violations.
It's just like I said, I mean, why are we doing this process? We can't afford, the only thing we're doing is we're creating something. Kevin will have something to go back with at a later date once the complaints come through.
Correct.
A person that's doing their business correctly will never hear from them and will never know whether they are four related, four unrelated, or if they snuck in two more, we'll never know until someone rats a mountain files a complaint. And then that's my, that's all we're doing. We've created the rule. my, that's all we're doing. Where we've created the rules, the guidelines, if people play by the rules, stay within guidelines, keep their noses clean, don't cause a problem, Kevin gets to stay in his office all day.
But just the last issue that I thought I needed clarification on, it is violations per year. I know that didn't state that, but that was what we were thinking, I believe, was violations per year, not violations with basically no, no end. No, is that not?
It's never been per year.
No, it's never per year.
And my understanding was three, told, three strikes, you're out completely.
Correct. That's the way it's always been drafted.
And I think if.
Personally, I mean, you know, and I don't mean to sound like the pettifogging bureaucratic attorney, there needs to be a statute of limitations of some sort. You just can't say in perpetuity. There needs to be some cutoff date. Maybe you don't feel comfortable with a year, but I don't feel comfortable without some kind of a time limitation. Now, again, I missed an important meeting. I apologize for that. That's one of the reasons I haven't spoken more this evening than I have, because I know you plowed through a lot of this ground. But personally, there's gotta be some kind of a time limitation on the time period that the violations occur.
I don't feel like we actually weighed that, that much.
We did not, we did not discuss how long they would lose their license for, as I recall.
Right.
But I do recall that we, we did say, "Three strikes, you're out."
Right.
Okay, now, does that mean if I have three strikes, okay, I sell the property of my wife and she keeps running it? No?
Or three strikes in seven years. You know, one every two and a third year and you're out.
Or two strikes in one year. I, I don't know. But it's also the point of, and I know we did talk about this a little bit in the next meeting, was what's gonna constitute a violation. Personally, I, you know, I don't know, and I'm not trying to give this commission advice, because that's not my purpose on this commission, to give you legal advice. But I, I think the way it's currently worded, it's not enforceable because it's too vague, quite candidly. I, I would have a heyday with that from a, from a, from a legal viewpoint, arguing about the vagueness of that particular provision. But if that's said.
You think, you know, garbage left out on the street all the time is vague or?
Monitors it.
Well, no. I'm not saying that that's, but violations reference to what?
Who, who says the trash is from their house? That's the, there's some ambiguity there, you know? And then you have the issue of the people leaving. So, then it's like, well, was there a violation? Because there's no one here. You know, the people speeding in the street.
I'll give up on how many people.
What is the neighborhood's recourse?
Right.
Pardon?
What is the neighborhood's recourse?
Recourse.
The balance. Like, what gives them the balance?
I'm not saying take it out. I just say it needs to be tightened up a little bit. But, no, that, that, it absolutely needs to be in there, but.
I mean, maybe one year, maybe perpetuity is not the right answer, but I don't think seven years either.
No, no, I said, I said if it's limited, it could be, you could rent it 10 years and then have three violations over that 10 years and you lose your license forever.
Well, that's true.
That doesn't make any sense. You know, that's what I meant. Do you all have any?
So, you're suggesting three violations within a 10-year period?
No, no, no. No, I'm just saying, the way it's written, you could have, have an Airbnb for 20 years and in that 20th year, get your third violation and could never have it again. I think that's the, that's the point. It's like, if you don't have some type of framework around it, it doesn't make sense. There shouldn't be, there's nothing that extends that long.
The person being cited with the violation will have the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So, there's an opportunity for them to be heard by another group. I don't know if it's expunged, but either way, there's a process for them to go through to appeal.
I think you can make it a shorter time.
Yeah, I just make sure I, I, and I understand. So, once a, an operator of Airbnb gets strike three, he's out of business. He can then go back and appeal to the Board of Appeals, zoning Board of Appeals?
Correct.
Is there a period?
Yeah, to feel the notice of violation.
How soon thereafter?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, an individual violation, not just the.
Each time.
Yeah.
Correct.
Each time.
So, to me, I feel like if you actually put a framework, whether it's a year or two years around that, actually, that process of going back and appealing and going through all that might be a big enough stick to really kind of help if that person is a, has a problem, might be a big enough incentive to kind of make sure the act's cleaned up. I don't know. I don't know. What do you all think?
I sort of feel like, I mean, a couple of people made the comment that they had gone out and reached out to their neighbors, said, "This is what we're doing," and incorporated it into the neighborhood. Perhaps that's the ideal, but I, I just can't jump over that hope that they would do that. Because, you know, it's, ideally in a neighborhood, that's what we're after. That's why it's part of the plan, is that you wanna, you wanna be in a community with other people called a neighborhood. So, if you had a violation, it would be something that you could, that you could handle. But the neighbors could also have, have the feel that if something happened and somebody was misusing it, then they had some recourse, to Tom's point. And I feel like the recourse in this situation is almost more of a sword over your head as opposed to something that you're gonna get beaten with every time. I just, because, I mean, to your point, by the time you go through your process, there are probably three people in. You know, I mean, in reality, when you really talk about it practically, it's gonna be my word versus their word. So, to me, instead of looking at it as something that would be unenforceable, though I guess it is, but the important thing is gonna be, I don't wanna have, as a, as an operator, as a host, I don't want, don't want my neighbors making topics like that. Because the appeal process is gonna stretch and is probably not gonna make it like I want it. But having that there gives me the impetus to try and make a good experience. And I tell you, if you take it out, you lose it.
Well, I would tend to support Mr. Feraldi's addition, the, you know, over the course of a year, or over, maybe over the course of two years, you know, have some kind of framework around it.
I would say three years, one violation a year.
Three years, okay, one viol, yeah. Which then would, you might, the first year, you might have two violations. But I, I do think there is that incentive to not, I mean, no one likes to go to court, even if they get out of the ticket, they still get sick of it. Like, I'm gonna drive a little more carefully.
I think that changes the, the spirit.
Right.
So, to do a year, to do, what do you, three years?
Three years, what about three years?
Three violations within a three-year window.
Yeah.
I just, I just said it needed, the language needed to be tightened up. And three years is certainly an improvement.
So, could we add that into the wording for a vote?
I would not do that.
Three violations of state or local laws, ordinance or regulations as relating to the property offered for short-term rental occurring within a three-year period shall result in the city revoking approval, et cetera, et cetera.
They're founded violations.
Right. Should we put that in there?
Violations.
Okay. A violation's violation, okay. It's not just an alleged.
Getting an official violation.
Yeah. All right.
Well, let's see here, where we are. Well, I, I think, I feel like we've covered these pretty reasonably. I don't know if there's more that we wanna add or if somebody.
Should, should we not vote on these individually, just?
No, not want to vote on the whole package. Is there?
I know you said that. We've got to vote on the whole package.
Yeah.
But, which we didn't do before. But if we voted on them individually, it could give council, unless they happen to be watching this or reading this, a clearer idea of what we agreed and disagreed on. But I'm sure they'll get it. I'm sure they're gonna have the same problems. So, I don't care.
Want to go that route?
I think we can go through that pretty quickly, I think.
I think we can go through it fast.
Yeah.
Do you wanna, do you wanna lead that, like you did last time?
Sure.
The, the definition of short-term rental.
Yes.
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 You should raise your hands, please.
Go ahead.
Seven, yeah. Okay, permitted in the RC through I and II districts.
So, everyone voted yes on the ballot?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Owner occupancy within the RC R1 and R2 districts. One, two, three, four.
I'm thinking.
Going once.
Owner occupancy is four to three. All right, hang just one second. All right.
The owner would not have to be present while the property was in use as a short-term rental.
Would not.
Would not have to be present. So, that's seven.
Everyone was yes on that one.
Okay. Structured offered as short-term rental in the RC R1 and R2 district would be required to retain appearance of a single household dwelling.
I didn't hear that, but.
Are we on number four or number five at this point?
Number four.
It would maintain the look of a.
Maintain the look of a.
Oh, you have the neighborhood, basically.
Seven, okay. Short-term rentals be limited to no more than four unrelated individuals. Four to three, okay. The number of dwelling units shall not exceed that of the underlying zoning district. Well, that's not gonna, I mean, that's not gonna happen anyway, so.
What was that one?
The number of dwelling units shall not exceed that of the underlying zoning district.
Well, you know, Tom, I think we're reading off two different lists. I'm, I'm, I was reading off the list of the memo that was sent on March 27th.
Well, this should be.
This is the second sentence from number five.
Number five. This is the second sentence of number five.
I think you'll leave that in, Tom, because the, the idea of that was that you weren't gonna have, you weren't gonna get in a situation where they were gonna take an outbuilding and turn it into a.
Correct.
So, I think that actually, you convinced me that that needs to be there. I hadn't thought about that.
All right. So, the reason I split that is because four, four of you agreed with number one for unrelated. Three said no, but I would hope you could have all agreed on that one.
Yes. I agree.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. One additional parking space per, per short-term rental before urban commercial district would be exempt.
Do not put it to council?
Five, seven?
Well, is, I mean, does that mean if it's a, if it's a five-bedroom house, they're only required one additional parking spot?
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't.
They're only required to have one space per dwelling unit now.
Yeah, well, I think. But y'all, y'all, y'all do agree with that?
I agree.
Yep.
Well, okay, sure.
All right. Can we say, show of hands again on the parking? Seven, great, okay. $150 registration fee.
Well, I've already had my say on it. I'm gonna vote for it so we can move the process forward. But I, I still been looking for somebody to come up with a better mousetrap to collect those.
Amen.
Those hospitality taxes.
All right, seven. Failure to register results in a $500 penalty. Seven. All buildings offered would have to meet the uniform statewide building code. Seven. Three violations of state or local laws ordinances occurring within a three-year period would result in revocation of approval. Seven. That would be it.
So, that being said, if we're voting the whole package, that is simply as a motion. I think we have to do that.
A move if we accept the tenants of the memorandum as revised.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe raise hands. All right. All opposed?
No.
All right. All right, so.
That's four, reading it to city council.
Yeah, that's carried.
You said the tenants of the memorandum. Let's clarify that you meant the draft ordinance.
The, the draft ordinance.
Yeah.
That we're looking, I'm sorry, that we're, I thought that's what we just determined.
Don't wanna have to come back next month. Okay.
Right.
Good.
So, for those of you who are left, because a lot of people have left, I'm gonna encourage you to make sure you get to the city council and be heard there, because, you know, that's where, that's where, they listen to advice, but that's where the action takes place. And that's where the rules and the ordinances are set. So, it's important to go there. And, and I do also encourage you all to remember that we're not, this isn't about limiting business, you know? We actually have a lot of areas in the city where this is allowed and, and we would encourage it. And I think the value of the business, you know, it seems like, maybe it seems like we under, undervalue it, but, you know, there's several business people on this panel and it is highly valued and the importance of getting people into the city. I've spoke with Mr. Calphe, and I think it's really important. And I, I was really hoping, I actually spoke with Mr. Martin. I said, "Did anybody really get in touch with you about working together and trying to do something over the last month?" And, and, you know, that's what I would hope, is that we would get more action. So, we've had people who sent scathing letters that were against Airbnbs, and I told them the same thing. A lot of them didn't show up, so I appreciate you all showing up. So, with that said, we're gonna move on to the next item on our agenda. And, well, I guess one question is, you know, we have a meeting coming up Wednesday. Is this something that we might be able to table? The second, second item for the meeting?
Two.
Item number two?
I mean, you can. I'm not sure why you two. You're just initiating us to.
Just, oh, just making a vote, like, to move this forward?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, yeah. We thought we were gonna be talking about it for.
No, you're not doing anything but telling staff to start the process.
And there might be a crowd waiting to hear this one. Okay. Well, um, well, then that's.
Ma'am, ma'am, I'd just like to thank you.
Congratulations. Your son sat through all this stuff with so well-behaved. I just have to acknowledge him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A move that.
Did we initiate that?
A move that we initiate the resolution.
I'll second.
All right, then. All in favor of, like, initiating the comprehensive, yeah, resolution? Looking at that comprehensive plan? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. So, where am I? Didn't have my cheat today. I think that's it. Did any have a motion? All right. All in favor, second? All, all right, okay.
That was easy. I thought there was gonna be a lot of discussion.